Okay, we're gonna test this out one more time. Renee Gien.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Awesome. Yes, thank you very much.
Present.
Alrighty, let's move on. Okay, Ms. Diane Landis. Can you say here Diane? Okay, hold on just a moment again. We're still not hearing you. Hold on. Alrighty, Mr. Jay Petkounas.
Here.
Perfect, thank you so much. Ms. Landis, I think it is your audio. We're still not able to hear you. We can see you, but can't hear you. Alrighty, Mr. Chair, the roll call has been taken. Thank you very much. And if I may, just take a moment to read the meeting guidelines. Thank you. The meeting is being recorded in live stream to the public. All speakers, please remember to identify yourself before speaking. Unless you are speaking, all mics should be muted to eliminate background noise. All cell phones and smart devices should be set to silent. Once motions are made, I will take a roll call vote. Once completed, the chair will announce whether the motion is passed. This will ensure that it's clear for the minutes. All presenters, please refer to the page numbers of the packet found in the up right-hand corner. If you have any member, if we have any members of the public wishing to speak, you will have the opportunity to do so under the call to the public agenda item. And as a reminder, if a trustee needs to exit the meeting early, please announce that so that we can record it for the minutes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to just make a couple of opening remarks and make a very official welcome to our two newest members of trustees, who I understand are coming back from Mexico and we're doing everything right. But anyway, we would like to truly welcome Dr. Essex and Mr. Conley, and we greatly appreciate that you've been with us. Dr. Matson.
Thank you. I'd like to just share a few thoughts, especially for my colleagues on staff, and that is we're really fortunate. We've got new, two new appointments, gubernatorial appointments to the board. And it's Dr. Chuck Essex and Mr. Tom Connolly. And I'm just gonna give you a brief summary of their backgrounds, and that is Chuck is probably known as one of the most knowledgeable people in the entire state on K through 12 type education issues. He's highly knowledgeable about areas related to budget legislative process, governance, which is very important to the Arizona State Retirement System. And I've had the privilege of working with him before, as he has served on the ASRS Board before. And he's extremely affable and professional. So we are very fortunate that the governor has determined that she would like Dr. Essex to be appointed to the board. So welcome, Chuck. Thank you. Our second board member, Tom Connolly, he is, in my opinion, one of the most knowledgeable people in investment management in the state of Arizona. So as you know, we have approximately $60 billion investment portfolio that we oversee in a lot of what most people would consider complex strategies, both public and private markets. And Tom is extremely knowledgeable about investment management. He knows academic investment management, theoretical investment constructs, as well as being a professional managing his own wealth management firm for years. Tom is also highly knowledgeable about governance issues. Once again, very important to the Arizona State Retirement System. So we now have a new individual on the board that's fundamentally focused on investment management and understands prudent governance and appropriate and professional governance. Both of them are extremely affable and can engage and sort of direct at a high level and make you feel motivated at the same time. So I look forward to working with both of them, and I think my colleagues on staff will as well. So thank you both for being willing to serve.
With that, we'll now move to Agenda Item Number Two, the Consent Agenda, dealing with the minutes of the last meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, or questions regarding the minutes of the previous meeting? Not hearing any. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chair, this is Sarah Weber. I move that the board approve the consent agenda.
There's a second. Tom Connolly, I'll second. We have a motion by trustee Weber and a second by trustee Connolly. Please call the roll through vote.
Thank you. Hearing a motion by Sarah Weber and a second by Tom Connolly, I will take a roll call vote for the motion to approve the consent agenda. Please answer I or N when I call your name. Mr. Michael Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Sarah Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Tom Connolly.
Aye.
Dr. Chuck Essex.
Aye.
Mr. Renee Gien.
Aye.
Ms. Diane Landis. Ms. Diane Landis.
Can you hear me now? Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. And Mr. Jay Petkounas.
Aye.
Thank you. Chairperson Miller, the vote has been taken.
Okay. Pass unanimously. This time we'll move to Agenda Item Number Three, the Presentation Discussion and Appropriate Action Regarding the ASRS 2025 Legislative Summary. So Scott, are you gonna take the lead?
No. Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, good morning. It's a wonderful morning today, and new members, the new trustees. I'm gonna turn it right over to Ms. Jessica Thomas, our Government Relations Officer, to give us an update on the ASRS 2025 update, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, for the record, Jessica Thomas, I am the Legislative Liaison and Rules Writer for the Arizona State Retirement System. Before you, we have the Legislative Summary for the 2025 Legislative Initiatives. We had five bills that we ran this session. We have House Bill 2034, related to the Supplemental Deferred Compensation Programs, House Bill 2035, related to Termination Incentive Programs, House Bill 2036, related to the Civilian Reservist Emergency Workforce Act, House Bill 2077, related to the Long-Term Disability Program, and House Bill 2335. House Bills 2034, 2035, 2036, and 2077 were all signed into law on July 1st, and they will become effective on the general effective date, which is September 26, 2025. House Bill 2335 was held, and it was held both by the sponsor and by the agency to allow the sponsor and the agency to engage with stakeholders, to allow the ASRS and the sponsor to work with stakeholders to ensure that the ASRS remains compliant with federal law and ensure that we are still providing benefits to our members. There were other bills that were pursued, not ASRS initiatives, however, those bills did not pass. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Jessica at this time? First of all, thank you again for all the great work that you do, working with the legislature and keeping us posted and up to date. And we commend you, and I know you will have more work coming to you very soon as the next session comes around. So thank you very much. Well, with that, we will move to Agenda Item Number Four. Presentation Discussion and Appropriate Action Regarding the CEM Pension Administration Benchmarking Related Topics, including operational performance of the ASRS as measured by the CEM Pension Administration Benchmarking Survey, and discussion of global pension administration trends. So Director Matson, are you picking this one off?
Actually, no, I'm gonna turn it right over to Jeremiah, and you kind of share some initial thoughts, if you will, and then turn it over.
Sure. Thank you, Paul. For the record, Jeremiah Scott, Deputy Director, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. This is one of my favorite subjects, that we get to review this every single year. The ASRS, as you know, through our strategic planning sessions, likes to be better today than we were yesterday, and we strive to be better tomorrow than we are today. We measure ourselves in our own strategic plan, but it is also important to benchmark ourselves against other pension funds, and not only in the United States, but across the globe, to see how we measure up in terms of service and cost. So today, I have Mr. Christopher Doll from CEM Benchmarking. I have Erica Webb, our own Benchmark Administrator here at the ASRS, and I have Katie Dano, the Chief Strategy Officer. And we're gonna talk to you today about the new CEM report. So with that, I'm gonna turn it right over to Chris.
Great. Thank you, Jeremiah, and good morning, everyone. My name's Christopher Doll. I'm the Relationship Manager with CEM, covering ASRS. It's a pleasure to be back with you again this year. Just by way of quick introduction on CEM, while the slides get pulled up here, CEM exists to help plans do better for their members. We're a fully independent third-party company that provides global benchmark reporting to participating pension plans for over 30 years. We provide peer-to-peer exchange of insights, data-driven research, and communities and practices. Today, I will present a review of your pension administration costs and performance versus a peer group. Page 26, I'm being told. Back up to. Perfect. I will be sure to leave time for questions at the end, but if you have questions as I walk through, please feel free to interrupt me. We could advance the slides, please. The key takeaways from the report today include the following. Thank you. Your costs were $75 per active member and annuitant. This was $49 below the peer average. You were mainly lower because you had lower support costs than your peers. Your costs did increase by 8% year-over-year, while peers saw increases of 5.7%, and cost of living was increased about 2.8% during that same period. On the service side, your service score was 91. This was above the peer median, well above the peer median of 81. This puts you as the highest service score within our universe. Couple of drivers for your service score, so you have strong call center accessibility, so people calling in and getting a response time quickly. Your pension inception's were much better than peers, and you have a good access and good usage of your secure member website. One area that you were impacted is call center capability. I'll dig into each of these items as I walk through the presentation. This is just a high-level summary. Your service score has increased by four points over the last eight years, from 87 to 91 today. When we bundle these items up, we get what we call the cost effectiveness. And so overall, your plan has lower cost and higher service than the average participant within our universe. So with that, I'll provide a little background, a slide piece, on how we build our analysis. And so this is a snapshot of the universe that we build our insights and analytics from. Includes 79 plans from around the world, mostly in the US, but also Canada and Europe. Thirty-nine of those plans are based in Europe, so you see about 50%. During my presentation, when I reference the universe or the all average, I'll be referring to these 79 plans. But in addition to this, next slide, please, we also build custom peer groups. And so for the purposes of benchmarking your costs and performance, we do build peer groups based on median size, based on active and annuitant members. We see that your size is at 396,000 members. This is very close to the median of this peer group, 382. So we feel that these 15 peers are appropriate for making valuable comparisons on cost and performance. There were no changes to your peer group last year. And so with that, we'll just jump right into the cost section. So the next few slides, I'll review your costs, and then we'll look at your service score, and we'll close with a discussion of your cost effectiveness. So as I mentioned at the outset, your costs were $75 per active member new tenant, $49 below the peer average of 125. We have separated out, oh, sorry. Yes, sorry. We have separated out business-as-usual costs, that table on the top right, from major project spend, really designed to illustrate what the costs are to operate the plan on an ongoing basis versus your peers, and what are the lumpier spend that plans are using to maybe modernize or improve their organization, but it's only a one-time or maybe an expenditure that they have over a few number of years, but not an ongoing expenditure. When we do that, we see that your business-as-usual cost was $68 and $41 below your average of 109. Your major project spend was $7, and this was $8 below the peer average of 15. Over the next few slides, I will break down the costs for both major projects and business-as-usual. So let's look at those now. Advance the slides one. On the left, your business-as-usual costs per member were below both the peer average and the all-universe averages, and you were the third lowest in your peer group. On the right, we see that each of your front office activities were well below the peers on a cost basis. And in the back office, governance and support costs were also below each of your peers, with information technology really driving the bulk of that governance and support cost. That's not inconsistent with what we're seeing from all your peers. That typically is the largest expenditure in that governance and support section. On the next slide, we'll look at major project spend. Your 2024 major project spend was $7 per member, an increase from $2 last year. This is still well $8 below the peer average of 15. Driving these costs were the five major projects that are listed in the bottom right-hand corner of this slide. I'm not gonna go through each one of them, but those are projects that have been initiated or ongoing and driving your major project spend over the last number of years, or over the last year specifically. Your eight-year multi-year average was $6 per member, and this was $3 below the peer average of $9. Could advance the slide. We'll take a look at the attribution of those costs across four key areas that we look at. So, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Conley.
My first shot on this microphone. Is that good right there?
Sure.
The spend here, major project costs, low, that could be good or bad. Can someone shed some light on that for me, very briefly?
Just so I understand the question, in terms of the total spend, in terms of, or just like in the cost of technology in general?
Are you able to do everything you want to do with respect to technology within these numbers?
I was thinking about this while they were talking, because it's important to point out that it's reflective in the service score, right? So what the members are experiencing with our technology, and what we're able to do is built into the service score. Are our members able to download their member statement each year off of the website? Are they able to process new retirements on the website? Are we processing refunds on the website? Do they have access to their contribution histories? Can they project and do estimates for their retirements? At the ASRS, we, I have to say, probably are the leaders in technology in terms of what our members are able to do. Thank you, Chris, for giving that nod.
Yeah, we have a slide on digital reach. They will touch on that at the end of the presentation. Just add a little context, and I'll highlight that when we get to it.
I think there's even additional layer of context that you can add, because our service score is the highest in the universe, and I don't want to bury the lead, and I know you're gonna go back to it, but that in itself, you know, a lot of pension funds will write themselves in their peers. We obviously also write ourselves within our peers, but in the universe, it's everybody. We have the highest CEM score in the universe, and you say to yourself, well, there's 79 pension funds that you're being benchmarked against, and what about the ones that aren't being benchmarked? And I'll tell you, but I've talked to some states that aren't in CEM, and I asked them, why aren't you in CEM? They, oh my God, I don't want to get measured, something like that, where we're measured against the best pension funds in the world. So not only are we at the highest service level in all of CEM, the entire universe, but I would say that the people that participate in this, and that their boards are approving them to participate, and make it important in their strategic planning, like you guys do, these are the best pension funds in the world that we're being measured against, and we have the highest level of service. So I think that's reflective of having the best technology, or some of the best technology in all of the pension fund world.
Jeremiah, let me, Tom, my guess is you're asking about, are we creating technical debt, right? Not spending money, and then five years from now, maybe have a technical deficit, that sort of question? Okay, so would you want to spend a minute on, for instance, we've got a migration to a sort of a laptop environment? So we're investing in a migration to be more efficient on the system side in different areas. Do you want to talk about that a little bit? And also, you made some really strong decisions about ROI on technical advancements over the last roughly 18 months. In other words, looking at bells and whistles, latency in our systems, what the trade-off is, enabling us to do best to go forward rather than building bells and whistles. You made some significant decisions, and you want to just talk a little bit about those?
We changed our approach to how we look at technology and the projects that we select. In the past, we had finite number of hours that we would say, well, here's the number of hours, here's what we could possibly work on, and here's what we're gonna do within these hours. And we said, that's not the greatest approach, because sometimes we wouldn't focus necessarily on ROI, but we'd have our frontline staff or supervisors or program managers say, oh, this is really important to one individual. Well, we took a step back, and we said strategically, what are we trying to accomplish as an agency? And we got the right people in the room to sit down and have a discussion. Our CTO, Chief Strategy Officer, and myself had this small committee within the ASRS, and we looked at the impact, the agency, because these are very important dollars. It's some of the most important spend that we do. The ROI for the members and the member experience, and how quickly we could perform and enact these changes. So if we could make a huge impact, and the members would feel a huge impact, but it would be something that would take three years, but we could see the equivalent impact and impact to the agency and the members, and we could see it in six weeks. We would take that six weeks on, we'd do it right away. And in doing this, we actually improved the outcomes, because we had like the business side voice in it from a high level, making decisions for the entire agency strategically, and saying, well, I hear you as the staff members, but we're looking at what the members experience, and we're making decisions that are strategically better for everybody. On the other side of that, we also reduce costs in technology, and I think that's important. It's not on this report, but it's gonna be on the next report, where we reduced, and it was a great effort by Trent Kendall, who's not here today, the CTO, reduced it by nearly a million and a half, I believe, $1.5 million for next year. But we don't make that decision in order to just say that we're the lowest cost. We have to weigh that. And then, because right now, we're also gonna be making a significant investment in our security side through identity verification. So making these strong decisions, making sure that there's high impact for the members in our decisions and choosing our technology, and high ROI for the agency, and being smart about how we spend our money on technology. We're not shorting the members. It's freeing up money so that we can make better investments to secure the pension fund going forward, because that world is becoming increasingly scary. So we need to make large investments in a portion of that, and doing that is making sure that we're spending it smartly and having high impact, and making sure that the members are actually reaping the benefits of where we're spending our technology dollars. Does that make sense?
In summary, trustee Connolly, I don't think we're creating anything the equivalent on the real estate side to deferred maintenance. I think quite the opposite. They are laser-focused on making sure that investments have a return in customer service. And I think if you look at what our objective has been, if you go back 15 years, it was to be top quartile service, bottom quartile cost. And we were initially told, you can't do that. If you want to be top quartile service, you gotta be top quartile cost. That was a mind shift. We're now looking at not just top decile. What they have accomplished now is top percentile service with low cost, and it's not a trade-off. It is not a linear trade-off. And there's a whole bunch of reasons we can go through why we do not believe it's a linear trade-off. And then the second thing I'd like to focus on is, our objective function, if you will, is not CEM. And that's well-understood by the executive management. CEM is highly valuable to us, but what we do not try and do is optimize, is a function of CEM. What we do is we look at what the parameters are, what they measure, and we say, do we have a house view that's strong in this area and different than CEM? And it could be how the call tree works, it could be any of these service-level things, because we know our clients, we believe, best in most areas. So if CEM says this is the best thing to do, we'll look at it. And if we believe we have a different house view, we will not try and optimize that area. We'll say, we think that's faulty. We think our membership, the best thing for them, is something different. Now, we typically are aligned in probably 95% of what they determine. And there are some areas that we look at it, and we'll say, we actually think they have a greater expertise in this area. We're not gonna try and override what they think is the best quality of service. But we've had multiple meetings where we've come to the conclusion, we can increase our CEM score if we change these things, and my colleagues will say, I think it's less good for our members, because we have a different view. Our membership is different. And we will not. So if you think of it, this is a strong input to how we manage our business. It is not a directive. Very different conceptually. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Can we advance to the next slide, please? So this is a breakdown of the costs across four key attribution areas. So the first is you have lower FTE or staffing levels per 10,000 members than your peers do. You're at 2.5 staff, and peers are at 3.4. This is resulting in a portion of your cost savings, about $10. You have lower third-party costs. You're at $2. Peers are at $5. This is resulting in another $3 in savings. You have lower cost per FTE, and this is really driven, so overall, this is saving $15, but this is driven mostly by lower salaries and benefits, lower HR costs, and lower building and utilities costs, offset slightly by higher IT desktop network and telecom costs. And then the last area is lower support cost per members. This was what I attributed at the outset of the presentation. So you are lower than peers across all categories except IT security, which Jeremiah touched on a moment ago. And it's not surprising, more and more plans are spending a lot more energy and attention on fraud prevention and IT security. And so we're seeing that tick up consistently across the universe. And so in that lower support costs, the costs for that group are being driven by IT strategy, desktop applications, and IT security for the ARS. When we bundle up those four categories, we're coming up with that $49 below peers overall. Can we advance to the next slide, please? And then finally, on the cost side, this is your cost trend over the last number of years. At the outset, I talked about the year-over-year costs. I'm gonna start with a discussion around the longer-term trend, because I think it's very important. So your costs have actually decreased by 0.7%, so just under 1% per annum over the last eight years. During that same period, peers saw increases of about 2.9%, while CPI was up 3.6%. So done just a fantastic job of keeping costs very low, actually falling over time, while peers are seeing increases, much larger increases than you are. Year-over-year, we did see a tick up. You can see that most of that is attributable to an increase in that major project spend. That's the light blue above the dark blue line on that far-right column there. So costs increased by 8%. Well, peers saw sizable increases as well at 5.7%, and inflation slowed a little bit last year to 2.8%. So those are my prepared marks on the cost side. I'm now going to turn our attention to the service score areas, and we can draw some more conclusions on these. So your service score was 91. This was 10 points above the peer average of 81. You are the highest, as Jeremiah mentioned, you're the highest service score in our universe. And then obviously, as a result of that, you're higher than the average and the median. You're also higher than peers across each of the four member journeys that we see in the bottom right-hand corner. I'm not gonna dwell on them on this slide. I have four separate slides that dig into each service area, and so we'll look at those now. If we can advance the slide. So your active member service score was 86, which was nine points higher than the peer average. There were a couple of strengths that were driving this. Purchases and transfers in. You have online calculators for prior service credits. You have online calculators for prior service credits, uh whereas only eighty seven percent of your peers do. And in-service leave where only fifty percent of your peers do. And your members can apply for transfers out online, whereas only thirty six percent of your peers do. Plus you provide written estimates in three days where the peer average is closer to eight days. Um, secure website access, your members ac- uh access your website at a higher rate than your peers do. And then call center accessibility, and we've talked about this in each of the last three years I presented, your members can reach uh you easily. Uh, there's only one menu layer that they have to go through, call wait times are very low at only forty one seconds. And your undesirable call outcome is less than one percent. So just a great result for members to access uh someone on the ca- on the phone, you know, one of your call agents. And then qua- call quality, your first.
I just want to take one note on the forty one second wait time, because that's something that we talk about in great detail. That also includes the IVR message that the members hear at the beginning. Their actual wait time is like four seconds to get a phone call, but they have to listen to the recording. So that's why the total average sounds like a little bit longer than it actually is, just wanted to point that out, thank you.
I was wondering who was going to point that out. Who's gonna, who's gonna, who's gonna point the clarification? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, did I get through call quality? No, okay, so call quality, your first call resolution was ninety two percent. This was higher than the peer average at eighty eight percent. Um, I, I do have a comment here, a couple of areas of opportunities. The first is going to be member statements. So um half of your peers send email notifications to members when statements are available. Eighty seven percent of peers provide pensionable earnings and forty seven percent include history on salary and service credit in their member statement. It is important to note uh that you've made a conscious decision to make all this information available through your website and not on your statements. Um, and so that is reflected, that access to the information is reflected in other areas of our survey, just not in the member statement portion. Any comments?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you, and Katie Dano, the Chief Strategy Officer. So Paul touched on this uh few moments ago about how we make, choose to make decisions that are in the best interest of our members rather than deciding with um CEM. And you see that in the member statements. This has been a piece for us for some time um that we have stopped doing, even though it is something that um we are lose points on, if you will, in CEM. Um, and this has been going on for probably more than a decade now that we've made this decision. We realized that when sending out email statements or sending the actual statements physically to members, it drove up calls, it increased wait times, it created confusion, it created a sense that they needed to do something when there was nothing to do. And so it wasn't in the best interest of our members nor in the best interest of our costs in terms of the cost of mailing them to them, the cost of taking those calls, dealing with the extra questions. So this actually points to that house view that we're going to do what is best for our members rather than siding with maybe something that would increase our service score. So just, thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Just two other uh areas of opportunities here, so personal information, forty eight percent of your peers allow members to make changes to communication preferences online. And then call capability, seventy three percent of your peers, call center agents have uh the ability uh to access members' use of digital tools with peers beginning to introduce co-browsing, live web chats and chatbots. If we could advance the slide, we'll review the inactive member experience, sorry.
Thank you, Chris, thank you, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Erica Webb, I am the Benchmark Administrator for the ASRS. We just wanted to point out that as far as uh members uh being able to change their communication preference online, this is actually something that the ASRS is already putting into motion. So there's several points that for fiscal year twenty four, we did not achieve that score for CEM, but we were already in the process of implementing it and will receive credit for it in fiscal year twenty five. Thank you.
Also, the seventy three percent of peers, contact center agents that have access to members' use of digital tools, essentially the cloud, the mirroring, correct? Yeah, we're also have implemented that and that will be on the next reports as well. So as we see these best practices, we ask ourselves, is this something that fits? And then we either implement or say a reason why it doesn't, so those are good examples, thank you.
Next slide, please. Um, so your inactive member score was seventy nine, which was six points higher uh than the peers. Uh, two areas of strength, so tracking inactive members, you tracked inactive members very well. Only two point eight percent of your inactive members did not receive a benefit at normal retirement age versus four point two percent for your peers. And then on transfers out, your members can process the transfers out online. Only two thirds of your peers uh currently offer that option. Uh, areas or opportunities on targeted campaigns, sixty seven percent of your peers send member statements and forty percent send out newsletters to peers, you do not currently. And then on a secure website, a little uh opposite from the active member experience, your inactive members access your secure website at a lower rate than peers. This is not surprising, inactive members are generally disengaged. Um, so uh it, not, not much you can do outside of driving campaigns to get them into the website. Next page, please.
Can, can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
Are you saying, under opportunities there on that previous slide?
Yep.
That sixty seven percent of our peers send paper ma- uh member statements? And that's an opportunity for us to send paper?
Uh, all I'm saying is sixty seven percent of the peers send paper statements. I'm not saying that's necessarily an opportunity for you. You've made a conscious decision to not send the paper statements for the reasons that Katie just outlined. Um, but this is an area that we're still tracking against, because a lot of the plans around the globe are still sending out those member statements. It's becoming an uh in- increasingly smaller weight within our service score as more and more plans move to a digital uh first approach to engaging with their members.
Yeah, and I think that they just haven't updated, in my opinion, their technology in order to be able to accomplish what we have, which is real time uh member statements online. But if we were to mail these, they would be out of date by the time that they received them in most cases. So I think that eventually that will become a non-issue in scoring, talking to the people that work at CEM. It's just that, it's like a lagging indicator for uh an old way of doing business and we're uh ahead of the game in, in most senses.
Um, so that's inactive. Um, if we could advance, let's look at retiring member experience, perfect, we're on the right slide. So your retiring member experience service score was ninety five, which was fifteen points behind than the peer average. Um, number of areas that you do really well. Um, targeted campaigns, you engage both active and inactive members with targeted campaigns as they approach retirement age. Um, pension estimate self-serve, so this is people accessing the website to get pension estimates. Uh, you have robust online pension estimate calculator with all the capabilities except for providing gross and net pension amounts. Pension estimate assisted service, uh you provide written estimates, so assisted service, sorry, let me be clear. Are people calling into the call center or people accessing through one-on-one counseling or presentations? Um, so written estimates are generally completed within three days. Um, retirement applications, members can submit applications online and you have a streamlined process uh for uh required document collection. Pension inception, ninety six percent of pensions and a hundred percent of survivor pensions are incepted without a cash flow interruption of greater than one month. Peers were seeing around eighty seven percent and seventy two percent respectively. Um, on disability pensions, you process your disability pensions within half a month. The peer average is two and a half, two point six months to be precise. Um, and then on personal information, your members uh have uh secure messaging, including a history of recent correspondence, so that can help the call center representative when uh engaging through the website. Um, on opportunities, salary and service credit information, sixty percent of peers provide a complete annual history of salary and service credit information. Um, that information, again, this is one of those areas where that information is available online, it's not in statements.
Thank you, Chris, sorry, this is Erica Webb, Benchmark Administrator again. I just wanted to point out, this is another one of those areas where the ASRS has found that this is something that would greatly benefit our members to change this particular opportunity for the salary and service credit to be available to them online. So this is another one of those that will be rolled out for fiscal year twenty five.
If we could advance to the final of the four member journeys, so the annuitant experience. The service score was ninety four, which was six points higher than the peer average. A couple of areas of strength, so pension payments, you, it, your members have a full suite of self-service tools to change banking and withholding tax information. Um, we've already talked about targeted communications in the secure website, I'm not going to dwell on those again. And then feedback, you have a robust voice of the customer program to understanding members' experience at key touchpoints. There were no areas of opportunities here to address. Um, so with that, let's advance the slide and look at the uh service score trend over the last eight years. We see that your service score has increased by fo- four points over the last eight years. Um, it was driven by a couple of areas last year. Um, so previously you were unable to provide the number of hangups in the member uh in the menu. Uh, and so a default was applied in our survey. Uh, this year you were able to provide that, so we do see uh an increase in your undesirable call outcomes, falling from four point three down to point five percent last year. Your voice of the customer program now includes surveying members leaving the plan as well, so that contributed to your improved service score last year. Couple of areas longer term, so on the website, you've added, added additional tools, including secure mailbox, online retirement applications and um uh more functionality within the calculators. Um, on the voice of the customer program, you continue to expand your, your surveying program to understand member experience at key touchpoints. And then ser- service delivery, you've seen improvements in timelines of key processing um as, such as setting up pensions and service uh purchase quotes. With that, let's advance to the next slide and we'll look at the cost effectiveness chart. So this chart is designed to illustrate your relative service against your relative cost. Ideally, you want to plot in the top left-hand corner in quadrant in this chart. This indicates high relative service and low relative costs. The peers are highlighted by the light blue circles and the universe are highlighted by the green circles. Your twenty twenty four results are um illustrated by the black circle and plotted in the top left-hand quadrant, indicating high relative service and low relative costs. I would also highlight that it is the most furthest up and into the left, which indicates that you are uh highest within our universe as well. Um, your improved result, uh relative service score over the last eight years has resulted in your results moving up from the purple triangle in twenty seventeen to where the black circle is now. Um, with that, I will close my review of your results with some key takeaways if we could advance the slide. So as I mentioned at the outset, your costs were seventy five dollars per active member annuitant, forty nine dollars below the peer average, mainly because you have lower support costs, but you have contributions across all four of those key attribution areas that we look at. You, oop, uh, your service score um was ninety one, ten points above the peer median of eighty one. Um, and driven by a couple of areas, contact center accessibility, pension inception and members, secure member access. Um, and your service score has increased by four points over the last eight years. And then overall, your cost effectiveness, you have lower costs and higher service than the average participant within, within the universe. So those are my prepared remarks on your plans results specifically. I have a couple of slides that speak to some global trends, but I typically like to pause here and see if there are any questions on the results before I move on.
Trustee, are there any questions?
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I kind of want to revisit the Vice Chairman's, I think, well warranted applause and just kind of revisit and I think, you know, really congratulate uh the ASRS staff. And, you know, we kind of glossed over it, but when reviewing the materials, you know, I don't want to, you know, place emphasis, you know, we, we serve a lot of constituencies from employers to employees and inactive and active members and whatnot. But, you know, when you think of sort of the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow, I think of retirees and annuitants. And when you look there, the scores were ninety five and ninety four, you know, and it's not out of a thousand, it's out of a hundred. And I think those are really tremendous scores. And when you see that and, and you see the breakdown of the scores, I think that's a really amazing accomplishment. And, and so I just kind of wanted to further call that out and just kind of congratulate um all of the staff, because I think that's a really impressive accomplishment.
Mr. Chair, if I can just echo those comments and congratulate the staff, I, I think these are results to be incredibly proud of. I, I also appreciate the discussion, uh, you know, and the debate, I hope you enjoy it too.
It's always fun debating with Jeremiah.
But no, I mean, this is to see that you are, that we're not just in service, but also in cost, um, outperforming. I mean, that is such a, I think, a, when we can go out to our members and say, you know, with confidence that this is verified, that you are getting the best experience possible. People should pack their bags and come work in Arizona so they can retire. Oh, congratulations, well done.
Vice Chair, uh, I really appreciate those comments. And I just want to take one brief moment, because we're up here getting thanks from you guys, which is super important. Uh, but I just want to thank every member of the ASRS from the very ground level, from the frontline staff all the way up to the top for their agility, their engagement, their innovation, just the hard work and effort that goes into this is tremendous, both in, in creating such a high service score and also accomplishing the lower, lower cost. So um I, I, I will absolutely pass on those kind words that you guys just expressed to them, because it's truly, we work with fantastic staff here at the ASRS, so thank you.
Just got a comment I would make on that. Obviously, your encouragement of everyone's involvement and engagement. Because it's leadership that brings that together to that point. And uh obviously you do that. My question is, at the, at the score level that you're at, how do you maintain that? By moving forward, I, I understand.
I can answer that, we keep moving the goalposts on them. We keep advancing our survey to be a little bit more ambitious and so that will give him and the ASRS team something to strive for. We did that about two years ago, we'll probably continue to do that. There'll be um, I suspect, new areas that we'll look at and ranking service, including member engagement, or sorry, employer engagement. So it's a constant evolution in our, behind the scenes on our side that helps put uh new markers up for Jeremiah to look at when he's assessing the strategy.
I also look forward to creating a gap between us and second place.
I like that.
For the comments.
My personal comment, sometimes it's lost i- i- as far as what the um, or actually even misunderstood about the low cost. Low cost is aggregate expenditures. Uh, and the lower our costs are, the more budget flexibility we have to reward staff. So it's sort of the flip side of what some people think. Some people say, in order to constrain costs, maybe you need to reduce expenditures on staff. And that's actually not what, how it works. By having reduced aggregate costs, we get budget flexibility. And that means when you have people that are really performing well or market comps have changed, we have some flexibility to reward staff. So that actually is something very pleasing to the executive management team, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, I have about five more minutes of prepared comments just to speak about some of the trends we're seeing globally. Um, so the first area is, so at the top, we have a little bit of a scatter plot of some of the themes and topics that we hear regularly from the pension administrators we engage with around the world. Um, this slide is becoming a little dated, I won't speak to the stuff on the right-hand side. I think we're past the post-pandemic impacts, but the stuff on the left-hand side of the slide is still quite relevant. Um, so digital engagement and digitization of that member journey and that member experience continues to be important. Um, members uh are expecting higher levels of service from pension organizations because they are engaging with other service providers like their cell phone provider or their Netflix on a digital basis. And they're bringing that experience and expecting their pension plans to deliver something similar to that. And so that's driving a lot of that. We talked a little bit about earlier about tech debt and whatnot. Um, upgrading systems uh is impacting costs in, in sort of two ways. The first is uh your, the initial outlay to upgrade the system and then the ongoing maintenance of that system. What we're seeing is plans are spending more after the modernization to go through exercises of continuous improvement and maintaining high levels of s- sort of security and adding new tools and features and benefits on their website to um, to deliver a better experience for their members. And that's keeping costs a little higher than I think some plans, based on what we've seen anyway, said some plans were expecting once they did that initial modernization. Hmm, in the past, plans would do modernizations ten, fifteen years ago and leave that system as is for an extended period of time. That model doesn't work anymore, they're upgrading the systems and then they're continuously deciding, I need to make an investment here, I need to upgrade this here, I need to add more security here. And so that seems to be the new working model around digitization and pension modernization and Jeremiah is itching to say something. And so that seems to be the new working model around digitization and pension modernization, and Jeremiah is itching to say something.
Yeah, I thank you for that. I just wanted to, and this is another area where I believe that the Technical Services Division and their leadership team has done a fantastic job. And I say that based off of the feedback that I've received from other pension funds is that we've broken our system down into microservices. So the technical debt, some pension funds haven't touched their entire system because it's one block. And if you touch any part of that, it breaks their entire system. So there, it's, it creates a massive amount of technical debt for them to open up that box. Because of the strategic way that, and this has been going on, I would say for the last ten years. So Dave King, and then now continued through Trent Kendall, we've broke that down through into microservices. So if we need to open one box, it doesn't affect all of our other areas. And we continue to break that down into more and more microservices so that we can continue to make changes without creating a tremendous amount of technical debt. So I think that's, you know, long-term strategy that's paying off today, that was implemented quite a while ago. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Couple of the areas on this slide before I move off. Cybersecurity fraud prevention and data quality are high priority as digitization increases. We heard this firsthand at our Pension Administration Conference earlier this year where the co-host with us gave an excellent presentation on all the things they're doing around fraud prevention. It's becoming an increasingly important area and we're hearing it firsthand. We're, we're doing some research around that this year that we'll be sharing with ASRS and the participating plans next year. And so we'll be adding more context. That's one of those areas that we'll be looking to improve our, our, our survey over time as cybersecurity and fraud prevention become important, really making sure the member who is authorized to engage the plan is actually the one that's engaging the plan, right? And then the last area is automation and AI. I have a whole slide on AI, so I'm not going to dwell on it too much here. But they, they do provide opportunities for improved member experience and improved efficiency in the plan behind the scenes. So if we could just advance the slide, this is a couple of stats from your, your specific plan in relation to the broader peers. So secure website visits drive the majority of your member engagement and have increased over the last eight years. They have trended down over the last two years, but you're still well above peers. You're averaging close, just under four thousand visits per ten, per one thousand members, whereas peers are under two thousand over that same time period. On the call trend side, we continue to see declines in call volumes. And, and your volumes are lower than the universe. This is a trend we're seeing globally. Call centers aren't getting as many calls as they used to because more members are able to self-service transact online. And ASRS has been at the forefront of that for the last number of years. One-on-one meetings remain below the pre-pandemic levels, but have increased year over year. They also remain below where the universe averages are. And then on presentations, they've been stable since the pandemic. Can I finish my thought or do you want to go now?
I'm sorry to keep interrupting, but I don't want to lose the train of thought here. This is Jeremiah Scott again for the record. So the one-on-ones was actually a concerted effort that I had actually mentioned to the board before that we wanted to do more outreach to long-term disability individuals that are going into retirement and also people that have lost loved ones for survivor benefits. We created like an outreach program in order to say, hey, we know this is a very difficult thing to go through. In both of those scenarios, I think it'd be a great idea if you could have a one-on-one with us so we could sit down and walk you through it. And so you could see a good market uptick in the one-on-ones, and that was by design. So I just wanted to mention that. So thank you.
Thank you. Let's advance to the next slide. I'm just going to keep moving in the interest of time. So this is digital reach. It's a measure of self-service volumes via your secure website versus assisted volumes through more traditional mediums like the call center, emails, or traditional mail. Your digital reach in twenty twenty-four was eighty-eight percent. That is a very high number in our universe, but not surprising given the digital nature of how the plan rolls out engagement with members. This was above the peers at seventy-two percent and the universe at sixty-six percent. If we could look at the next slide, fifty-nine percent of plans have seen increases in secure website visits, while calls and email volumes have fallen. You have seen a modest increase in secure website visits, and this is on a relative basis. And, but I have also seen a decrease in call volume. So a good story overall there, consistent with the bulk of the universe. Go ahead, Jeremiah.
I, I wanted to give credit to the communications team on both the fronts of being able to communicate in a way that doesn't drive phone calls and provides complete information. And it's one of their strategic goals not to create new phone calls or contacts. So a great job by Nate Baringle and Katie on that, on that side. And then also on the secure logins and being higher in general than our peers and the number of unique logins is just a fantastic job by our communications team and by our T S D team to have the great tools in order to, for the, to serve the members when they do login. So thanks.
Thanks, Jeremiah. Next slide, please. So just a couple of stats to touch on around your call center. Your call wait times have increased over the last eight years, but your times remain below the peers and the universe. Call, time on the call has, globally has increased because the complexity of the calls that are coming in are more complex than they were before. Because members are able to get what they need online, they're not needing to call in as much as they used to. So when they do call in, the call is generally more in-depth, more engaged, requires a little bit more time for the call center reps to do research and follow-up and whatnot. So that's what's driving call times up. Your first call resolution stats are higher than peers and the universe, but slightly lower than the historical average. I think that's related to some of the changes that you made in how you're calculating it. And then you're, on the top right-hand side, your call wait times remain very low and well below the peers and the universe. And your undesirable call, call outcomes are firmly below peers and the universe at one percent. Let's go to next slide. We talked about pension system modern, pension system modernization. You're not in the midst of modernizing your pension system right now. Seventeen of your peers are, or the universe are. I'm not going to dwell on this much. It's not really applicable to you right now. And next slide, please. So this is my slide on AI. I have a couple of things I'll reference on the left-hand side of the slide. On the right, there are some more unique examples if you're interested. But on the left-hand slide, in the contact center, we see plans starting to be very consistent around using AI to record and transcribe the call, summarize the call, load that summary directly into your CRM or your pension administration software, and then perform quality assurance checks on the call. And so it's alleviating some of that call quality team that you may have had in the past, where you're now using the AI to make sure the information that is given to members is accurate on the call. On document management, we see the aggregation of documents for ease of query. Sir, was there a question?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on that. So this is my other life. I work with cities and towns. And one of the challenges we've had is with transcription software. And, and so I work with, and so frankly, the, the most successful software we've had was the one developed by city clerks, right? Because a council meeting doesn't sound like humans, right? When you're making motions and the terminology you use, it's not normal human speech. And so the, imagine the pension world is also fairly unique. And so I was just kind of curious, are there, is there someone out there creating some sort of software that is, you know, like an L L M that is trained to know when we're talking about multipliers and years of service and credits and, you know, those kind of things to make sure that the transcription is actually proper so that it actually can be trusted that it's transcribing the information correctly? I'm just kind of curious about that.
Trustee, again, we've actually been looking into a couple of different transcription tools. As with everything with the ASRS, we won't implement it until we're fully confident with it. And so we'll be working on that. We have been working on that. And we should, if I was to predict, probably within the next two years, have something that's similar. Right now, the tools that we have do not meet our standards, but we're getting there very quickly.
Yeah, and I would.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I would, I would add to that, that AI has advanced significantly just in the last twelve months. The plans that are doing more, more of these examples are, there are more and more plans are rolling into this faster than I would have expected a year ago. And so the, the other thing is, that in, in the call center, I don't think it is, the transcription at this point, you're spot on, is not perfect, right? And so it, what it's allowing call center reps to do is save time off of the call, but there's still need to go through and make sure what it has transcribed was consistent with what they recall the call to be, make edits and then load that in the system. We're not at the point where it's end-to-end, which is probably why Jeremiah is saying we're not quite there yet because it's missing that step, perfect transcription, perfect summary, loading all the takeaways into the system. And then, to be honest with you, the, the AI system would be able to actually spit out, these are the takeaway items that you need to go back with to the client, that's personalized to that client's, like, individual circumstances.
Trustee, again, I would, if there's one trait I think the ASRS has, it's risk adverse. So we're very careful with how we implement things for sure. And I, and I have a lot of contacts with some of these other pension funds that are doing fantastic work and blazing the trail for us so that we can be intelligent followers after they make the mistake. So we can follow up with the right model. So thank you.
So I talked a little bit about document management. Automation, the use of robotics of back office tasks is becoming more and more automated and AI is helping drive that. The last one is proof-of-life verification. We talked about this earlier, about facial recognition. About a year ago, I probably would have said this would not fall into AI, but given all the discussions we've had with pension administrators around the world about fraud prevention and cybersecurity and authenticating the individual that has the authority to actually process the transaction fraud, proof-of-life verification is increasingly important. So using financial recognition technology to identify the members and validate is, is, it's driving part of that. Next slide. And the last slide I have, oh, sorry, the last slide I have is just around IT security. This is an area that we just started tracking in the last two years, as you can see by the short timeline on that right-hand side. So with the increased focus of protecting member information against cybersecurity attacks and fraud prevention, we have begun tracking this information around cyber, IT spend, IT security spend. Your IT security spend was eleven dollars per member. This was above peers at four dollars and thirteen cents and the universe of three dollars and eighty-four cents. You'll recall at the outset of the call conversation, I said there were seventy-nine plans in the universe. There's clearly not seventy-nine bars on the left-hand side of that chart. So this is one of those areas where plans are still trying to figure out how to disaggregate IT security spend from their broader IT budgets. And so this is an improving statistic that we're getting, but it's not a complete statistic that we're getting. So take this information with a grain of salt. And those are my prepared comments.
First off, thank you for this presentation. Any other questions from trustees? I would usually make Mr. Scott or Katie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Katie Dana, Chief Strategy Officer. So now we've heard from Christopher Dahl about the way that C E M sees this information. What we do with this information is we turn it over to Erica Webb, our Benchmark Administrator. And she does our internal analysis where she looks for our own house view of what this data looks like and where we can move forward. So I'd like to turn it over to Erica now to provide her analysis of this report.
Thank you, Katie. Again, this is Erica Webb, Benchmark Administrator for the ASRS. If we can go back, I believe it's going to be twenty-one, page twenty-one. Yes, so this is the first year that we'll be presenting this to the board. And part of that is because Chris has always done such an amazing job, C E M, when they come out presenting the data in a very summarized manner, has done such a great job. But we felt that it was important to show the board how we actually use this data at the ASRS. So this is actually a condensed version of a report that I provide to our management team to kind of go over what our results for the fiscal year were and where we're looking to make improvements. We did cover a lot of this already through the questions and conversations, so I'll be very brief on here. But one of the things I did want to point out is you can see in the middle of the, the page there, the service performance by member journey. So Chris kind of covered the member journeys and everything like that. I feel like it's important for you to see that our overall service score, while it was a ninety-one for fiscal year twenty-four, I think it's important to see how that's broken out amongst each one of those journeys. So you can see what the score was for each one of those journeys that attributed to that ninety-one. To the right of that, you can see how C E M weighs each one of those member experiences. Obviously, with our retiring members being the highest weight in that C E M score. And it shows you where the ASRS landed in comparison to the peer median, peer average, and our all average, the universe average. This is really useful for us as a team so that we can look at where are we making changes that will not only impact our membership the most, but we're looking at what our peers are doing as well. So that's something that, that really guides us in our decisions, as well as that call center service score trend and website service score trend. These are really highly weighted within the C E M universe, which means that those are benchmark industry standards where these are something that people are focusing on. These are also our highest touchpoints for our members. So this is where we're getting the most impact with our memberships. So it's really important for us to keep an eye on those service score trends and see how are we performing and providing that service to our members. You can go to the next screen now. This next page, we kind of covered the cost already. Overall, you can see the ASRS overall scores, I'm sorry, the overall cost per member broken out by the business as usual and the major project costs. Below that, this is a really important segment that we like to look at, is the ASRS percent of pension admin spend. So Chris touched a little bit on our IT security being significant in cost. You can see on here that both our major projects and information technology do make up a large portion of the percent of our pension administration spend. To the right of that, you'll see broken out in each one of the C E M activity categories, how the ASRS performs in those particular activities compared to our peers. This is important for us to see where we're attributing our funds and our service to our members. But below that is that IT activities cost. So he talked about that IT security cost being at eleven dollars per member, which is higher than our peers. However, as you can see on the chart, the ASRS attributes our funds across those IT activities a little bit more evenly than our peers are doing. So our peers are not attributing costs to that IT security as much as they are that IT strategy database and applications activity. So the ASRS is just distributing our funds a little different from our peers. And we feel very comfortable with the decisions that we're making as far as our IT is concerned, specifically in regards to security and increasing the security. Did you have a comment? Sorry. And then on that final page there, you'll see that this is just our trends in total service score and our trends in our cost per member. It's important for us to look at these together, similar to how Chris shows us that relative service versus relative cost. We want to look at this chart and see that we're providing the highest possible service that we can for our members, not just this year or last year, but across the board, as well as maintaining those lower costs. And as we touched on just briefly, low costs sometimes can get a negative connotation to it because it sounds like a bad thing. But in actuality, by maintaining lower costs as an agency, we're making sure that we're not trickling down expenses to our members. We're not increasing costs for them, cost of service, contribution rates, things of that nature. And in turn, we're also allowing more room in the budget for us to attribute those costs to salary for our staff and things of that nature, other compensations. So that we can, because as we know, maintaining and highly engaged staff helps us maintain these high service scores and promoting the service to our members. And that's all I have for today.
Really quickly, if I may, Mr. Chairman, probably can't hear me, sorry about that. Mr. Chair, again, Katie Dana, Chief Strategy Officer. I wanted to just give Erica and her group who does this report for us, the data collection, some kudos. This year, ASRS was recognized to have one of the most timely and cleanest reports in the C E M universe. Not only is that just great that we're timely and that we have clean data going in and being recognized, but it also ensures on our end that we're chasing the right things because we know the data we're putting in is clean. The cleaner this report is, the more precise and accurate we are when we are doing our analysis and then making strategic decisions. So I just wanted to commend Erica and her team that does this for allowing us to achieve that.
Just some over comments that I might make. First of all, besides saying kudos and congratulations to phenomenal work, I would back up on a couple of things. One, communication, because this is so clear. And I would also say, going back to the one-on-ones, I'm, as I've worked with Katie on this for the last couple of years and moving forward, for the last couple of years and moving forward, uh, our state Music Educators Association has a conference, and they have graciously come out and presented to teachers there that are in preparation for their retirement. And their willingness to all of a sudden create those kind of communications, I commend you very highly. And I know it's greatly appreciated by those teachers that are there in attendance. Um, as I've monitored that session each time and and will this year. So, you know, the communication level, to me, has only gotten stronger and stronger and not just to individual teachers, individuals involved, the employers, all of that level of engagement. And it shows in terms of the strength of the organization, but it also shows internally for members of the board here. I'm going to say less confusion, less um problems to deal with. And, uh, you know, I think it's important that we wave our own flag and keep that going, uh, because it needs, people need to see this and they need to, in today's world, can be able to see how, you know, you can have great service with low cost. I don't think anybody will complain or object to the eleven dollars for IT services or security services, especially in today's day and age. And anybody who's ever been involved or had an incident in their own personal lives of of a account being hacked or whatever, you suddenly really appreciate it even more. So, you know, it's uh, I I commend, as I say to Jeff Haskell and all and his crew, that it's like, do you sleep at night? And so, you know, I commend them for the the work that they are doing. It's it's just monumental. So, thank you. Any other comments, sir?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, just to build on that, for some of our, I guess, some of us, uh, more long-in-the-tooth trustees, I also just want to commend that, frankly, that it was Katie herself that, to me, was the change agent for a lot of the improvements in communication that I feel like we've seen at ASRS. Um, and, you know, sort of recognizing some of the, um, you know, Jeremiah kind of touched on, uh, recognizing people who have caregivers and people who are in different sort of stages in their life and how they require different communication methods. And and I think, at least during my tenure as a trustee, seeing that change and and I would, I think, I would put a lot of that and a lot of those improvements at at Katie's uh, uh, you know, her responsibility and and for what it's worth in terms of, I guess, trustee feedback, and I would invite other trustees to weigh in. I want to go back to Erica, something you said on one of your first slides about, you know, you said, you know, we can, you know, we want to continue to highlight the call center score trend and the website score trend. Um, and I would just completely agree, right? Um, it's funny, but, you know, I'm also an ASRS member, you know, I'm not only the president, I'm also a client. Um, and so how many times I, over the years, have said, well, you know, you can go on the website and just look that up yourself, right? It's funny how many people don't realize all of the things they can do on the ASRS website. Uh, and I love how much the house view is on on how prideful we are about our short wait times, right? I mean, has anyone ever tried to call the federal government? If you've ever tried to call social security, or a couple of years ago, my wife had to renew her passport and was trying to get an appointment to renew her passport. And just something as simple as if your first point of contact with government is waiting on, uh, is is being, is waiting in hold. And frankly, the longer you wait, the angrier you get. And you don't want to hear, your call is important to us. Please stay on the line. Your number, four hundred and fifty-seven out of nine hundred. Like, that doesn't make you happy. And so as a trustee, I love that we prioritize short wait times because that means you are getting to a human faster. You're not getting to an AI voice. You are getting to a human faster, which makes you feel valued. And I think our retirees, our members value that. And I think that that first interaction is critical to them having a positive view of ASRS. And so just, I guess, from a trustee perspective, I I I really value that and appreciate that 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 ASRS continues to have that view. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just have a quick question for Christopher. I think this is really interesting, the global trends, and I'm curious if you're seeing um in the larger universe as these technologies become more and more, I I think, normalized in our day-to-day experiences and as changing demographics. Um, are you seeing more maybe acceptance, comfort, and even uh expectation of some of the, you know, technologies, the web-based um access, things like that that we talked about today?
Yeah, definitely. And as part of what's driving the trend, uh, so there's two components. You talked about demographics. So as um, as the younger cohort of uh members at pension plans, they're more digitally savvy and they are pushing plans to have digital technologies because they don't want to call into a call center. It's the exact opposite thing if they want to do, especially if they're four hundred and fifty in the queue. Um, so that's part of it. And then the other part is, is there's just so much expectation um in 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 everyone's day-to-day life about doing self-service. Um, so this does pose some challenge for sort of the older cohort of retirees. And so plans are having to offer both a balance of digital and self-service options. Um, but the trends that we're seeing is, I think it was something like seventy-five percent of the plans in our universe have a hybrid model of digital and and a very small portion are a hundred percent digital and a very small portion are um still old, old, what I would say, old-world uh call center-driven type models. So um, the evolution is very clear that digitization will be a core component of the service engagement that pension plans are delivering to their members over time.
Thank you. Truly appreciate the presentation and the information. Um, if there's no further questions or from trustees, we will move on to agenda item number five. Agenda item number five is the presentation discussion and appropriate action regarding the twenty-twenty-four ADOA ASRS Employee Engagement Survey Results. Um, and I know this is great news as well. Uh, so um, it looks like Mr. Scott's ready to take the lead on this.
Yeah, I'll just do a quick introduction, introduction, uh, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Trustees. Uh, so if we're talking about a three-legged stool, we just talked about service and cost, and that their leg is our employee engagements, the ones that drive these changes and help us accomplish all these wonderful things. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to uh Jana, uh, Jana George, who is going to go over our engagement survey results along with Erica Webb. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremiah, Chairman and Members of the Board again. Erica Webb, Benchmark Administrator and Survey Administrator as well for the ASRS. Um, today, we're going to talk about the twenty-twenty-five Employee Engagement Results, uh, proctored by ADOA, uh, Arizona Department of Administration. So each year, ADOA proctors this survey. This year, the survey occurred from April fourteenth of twenty-twenty-five through April twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-five. Um, the, there are always fourteen standard questions that are asked by ADOA specifically to all state agencies. Um, ADOA then collects this data from all state agency employees and provides it to the state agencies themselves. Uh, the, each agency is also permitted the opportunity to ask additional questions. The ASRS chooses to ask thirteen additional questions. So on your screen here, you can see both the fourteen questions that are standard asked by ADOA, as well as the questions asked by ASRS. The questions asked by ASRS are specific to us because we want to measure our employees' perception of specific things, such as the ASRS leadership, communications, trust, and also our pride values. So those are the key things that we're looking for. For twenty-twenty-five, the ASRS result for the ADOA statewide score of those fourteen questions was an eighty-nine percent. Um, I'm sorry, an eighty-eight percent. Our participation was an eighty-nine percent, which is a fantastic participation rate, especially in comparison to sixty-nine percent for the state average on participation. So our score was an eighty-eight percent. Um, compared to last year was an eighty-seven percent. So we we ticked up just a little bit on our engagement score and compared to the state score of seventy-six percent overall. If you want to go ahead to the next page. Thank you. So on here, you can see, uh, there are also, in addition to the squ- the questions, the fourteen questions asked by ADOA, there are three additional questions asked pertaining to remote work. These ones are not used in the actual scoring. They are simply used just to assess the employee perception on the the telework environment, just to gauge, make sure that employees um still feel comfortable where they're at. Uh, on here, our key findings for the ASRS. We found that the ASRS has a highly engaged workforce that feel like their work is critical to achieving our goals as an agency. They understand clearly what's expected of them in their work on a day-to-day basis. And they have an overall sense that their team and management display those pride values that the ASRS is looking for. So those pride values are professionalism, results, improvement, diversity, and excellence. Now, on our statewide questions, the ASRS had specific strengths. Um, where our overall score of eighty-eight percent was twelve percent higher than that state average. Uh, but we also exceeded our own strategic goals by eight percent. And in nearly every single statewide question, as well as the agency-specific question. So we definitely exceeded our goals on on nearly every question. Uh, highlighted on the page there, you'll see that my job is important to support the mission of my agency. That was ninety-seven percent of our staff that feel that way, uh, which I think is something wonderful because it's it's hard to have an engaged staff if they don't feel like what they're doing is important. Uh, there also ninety-four percent of our staff feel that their supervisor shows care and concern for employees, as well as, like I said, understanding clearly what is expected of them at work. On the next segment there, you'll see the strengths for our agency-specific questions. Again, these are not used in our overall scoring, but it is something that we look very closely at because this is what's gauging our our internal actions. Uh, these are driving our community as a staff, how we feel as in our culture. So we definitely use these results um when trying to determine any action plans that need to be taken. So you'll see on there, um, that there were a few places, I I mean, a lot of places actually have a unique challenge in reviewing the engagement results because the results are so good. It's hard to pinpoint which ones to show you guys and which ones even are opportunities for us to improve on. But you'll see there that ninety-one percent of our staff feel that the person that they report to directly provides timely and accurate information, takes the time when appropriate to uh to do so, to explain his or her decisions. They also exchange thoughts and ideas freely with their employees, which I think is extremely valuable in how we tackle problems within the agency. Also, ninety-one percent feel that the pride values were displayed specifically by their program managers, as well as their chiefs. And ninety-two percent felt that the pride values were displayed by their team and their supervisor. Um, and of course, ninety-three percent agreed that the ASRS director displays the pride values as well. Um, below that, you'll see the areas for further examination. Again, it's difficult to to pull these out. When we have such high results, we're looking for any slight change, anything where we can improve. Um, so we do have historically, communication between divisions is open um and positive and productive. This one, historically, each year, we've seen be a little bit lower than our other scores. And it is something that we actively work on each year. I believe there were also some chiefs that are in meetings currently discussing ways that they can work together to try and improve this perception within our uh our employees. Um, there was a slight drop in our agency supports my participation in education and professional development and opportunities. Um, and so, again, we want to highlight that and make sure that our management knows that if this is how the staff is feeling, we need to keep an eye on it, see what we can do to promote that score, again, even though it is still higher than our strategic goal. Um, there was one other thing that came out, uh, and I want to give some background on it a little bit. So I talked about those three remote work questions that ADOA asks. These are those three questions right here. So it's regarding how much of our staff utilizes the remote work options. Ninety percent of our staff indicate that they worked remote, they work remotely one or more day per week. Um, that's a pretty significant portion of our staff. Um, and of those, ninety-eight percent indicated that the remote work has a positive impact on their work experience and their immediate supervisor or manager gives them the support they need to successfully work remotely. The reason that these are important to highlight is that we did see some commentary um and possible concern come out of our employee comments this year during the engagement survey regarding remote work. So at the time that the survey was proctored, there was an open bill in the House and Senate with a call to return to office. So we believe that there was a direct correlation to these comments and such a strong uh feeling of talking about how much it means to them uh because of of that call to return to to office bill that was in discussion. However, legislative session, session, sorry, ended without the passage of the bill. Um, so we have already recommended to our chiefs and our management that they just revisit the topic with their their teams, with their staff, and just remind them that this bill did not pass. There's no change in the stance that the ASRS has regarding remote work. Just to reiterate to our staff that, you know, there there's nothing uh going to be changing on the ASRS perspective at this point. Um, again, another theme that came out in the commentary was regarding the compensation levels, not keeping pace with the rising cost of living. This is something that we've seen before. As a matter of fact, I believe it was last year that I presented to you guys that the only year in which we did not see this appear in the survey was the year that the ten percent mandated raise was was in place. So it is common that we see this one. One thing that I did find interesting, though, is that we are um in in speaking with other state agencies, we've realized this is not unique to the ASRS. Other state agencies are experiencing this same commentary from their own staff. Um, so it's it's a challenge that is shared amongst the state agencies. On the next page, this is just an overview. Um, on the top up there, you'll see each one of our divisions broken out on those statewide questions. These are the ones that ADOA provides that score for. So this is the statewide score that we're looking at, broken out by each one of our divisions. As you can see, highly engaged staff across all the all the divisions, um, again, exceeding our strategic goals. Below that, it's just a deeper view of those agency-specific questions where our staff feel, um, you know, in regards to the ASRS leadership specifically, regarding trust and and our community, our culture, things like that. Uh, and that's just the overall view from the inside of what our divisional scores looked like on those agency-specific questions. Um, and Jana over here has is our HR representative who um works on the employee engagement with me each year. She actually meets with our chiefs after the results come in and we've reviewed them. She meets with each one of the chiefs to go over any action items that may have come out through the uh through the engagement survey so that we can make sure that we're always uh taking a deeper look at whatever comes out of the survey. And for that, I will open it up to questions.
Any questions or concerns?
It's just a comment. Sure. I can't help myself. I'm sorry. I'm I'm a recovering chairman, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. Uh, the, can we go back to, I guess, the first page from this presentation with the overall eighty-eight percent? Um, and again, everything in my brain has to either be a pop culture reference. But, you know, there's that famous story, I forget who it was, I think, maybe JFK was touring NASA and he pulls the custodian aside and he says, well, hey, what do you do here? He says, I'm putting him, I'm putting an astronaut into space, Mr. President, right? That idea of everyone getting behind the mission. If I was Paul, I would have my signature line on my email, ninety-seven percent, my job is important to support the mission of my agency. That is just amazing. Like, that is, I don't know, I guess apparently I'm I'm just like the cheerleader for the, can we add like a third position for the board? But that is just amazing for, and 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 that's not just Paul. I mean, that is every, you know, chief, department head, division head, every supervisor, to have that kind of, I think, vision and have that go, having worked in large organizations, vision falls apart very quickly, right? I worked in a very large town and you get very quickly where it's like, you know, the guy on the trash truck, it's it's a job, right? So to keep vision and to have that kind of score is very impressive. And uh, and I think everyone in this room really plays a role in that. And that's a, that's just, to me, a very impressive score. And so I guess I do have a question, which is, do we, so that's a statewide question, right? Do we know what the state Do we know what the statewide average is on that number? Because I guarantee you, it's not ninety seven. If you have that number, I'd love to know it.
So it'll be that one right there at the top. You'll see overall engagement, overall, I am satisfied with my job. My job is important to support the mission of my agency.
Forty percent, seventy four percent, am I reading that right? Yeah, so again, I think just really to everyone in this room and everyone that plays a role in that. You know, I think everyone should be so lucky to work somewhere where where they can feel that they and understand that they have a role in the overall mission of their of their employer. I think that's fantastic and and I don't know, I'm just so proud of everybody, that's great. Kudos. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, Sarah Weber, I just wanted to ask a question because I also work at a state agency. We administer this, utilize this. One, commend the agency, not just on the results, but putting in the specific questions. This is great to see. I think these are great questions that just, the fact that they're included show the leadership of this agency. But also really, I think, impressive, the values have been instilled in the agency. I I'm curious, just because we just saw the presentation of showing very clearly how we compare to our peers. We have the comparison to the average, does ADOA disclose how the agency performs? Like, overall? Because I I asked that question because my assumption would be that you are the top agency or in the top, you know, if we were to look at these scores, agency by agency, especially in the, you know, the size of this organization.
Thank you, Vice Chair Weber. Katie Dano, Chief Strategy Officer. So ADOA actually moved away from sharing rankings. We did have them about five years ago when I was Survey Admin. And you are correct, we were very highly ranked amongst our peer agencies. But no, they do not share that.
Can we call you the Chicago Bulls of?
Well, if.
The New England Patriots of the government.
Say we might be called the Patriots, but yeah.
Sorry, the Boston Celtics have won eighteen championships compared.
I would personally, I would prefer that over the Patriots.
Just one comment I have, first of all, again, kudos and 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 I support everything that people have said. But I'm also impressed the fact that once you get these results, you don't ignore them. You dig into them to figure out how you can improve even at a higher level. And that is so important because it's easy to get to the top and just start ignoring it. Assuming that everything's going to continue on as is. And we know too well that that's not necessarily the case. So I commend you for the taking that action to constantly work to build and move forward. So thank you. Okay, with that said, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six. Presentation, Discussion, and Appropriate Action Regarding the ASRS Budget-Related Topics, Including the ASRS Appropriated and Continuously Appropriated Spending Plans for Fiscal Year 2026 And the ASRS Appropriated and Continuously Appropriated Budget Request and Spending Plan for Year Fiscal Year 2027. So.
Well, we give them.
Kick this one off.
Well, I give them that, I'm going to turn it right over, Mr. Chair, to Martha Rosa.
That's just fine.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to present. Because of time, I'm going to turn it over to the individuals, let them introduce themselves. And they are who prepared all these documents, so thank you.
Good morning, Chairperson Miller and members of the board, and welcome new members. My name is Athena Elliston, and I'm the Budget and Procurement Manager here and the Chief Procurement Officer. I will make my comments brief and shortly turn the presentation over to Jeremy and James, who will be presenting the the bulk of the materials. I do just want to say quickly that there's been a lot of work put into this budget by Jeremy. It's a lot of tedious, detail oriented work, a lot of reaching out to the different divisions to make sure that everything is as it should be. So thank you, Jeremy, for all your work on this. And I do want to mention that this is going to be the third year in a row that we are submitting a budget request without an increase. And as we talked about with the last two agenda items, we've been able to do some great things at this agency with working on security, making sure that our employees are rewarded for the hard work that they do. And we've been able to do that without spending more more dollars, so we're very proud of that. And I will just also add that we work very closely with the division chiefs on a monthly basis. We have a a budget update, we're regularly discussing the different services that we have. Are there services that we don't need and we need to get rid of? Or are there ways we can tweak what we have so that we're always thinking of the budget and what's best for our members? And the division chiefs are really great partners in that. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Jeremy. He's going to present the the main portion of the our budget presentation. And then James is going to talk about the investment side and give a little more detail on that. So with that, I'll hand it over to Jeremy.
You know, I'm Jeremy Gunderson, Budget Manager at the ASRS. So Agenda Item Six is on page fifty five of your packet. It includes two parts, the FY twenty twenty six spending plan and the FY twenty twenty seven spending plan. As Athena mentioned, I'll just talk about the administrative spending plans for each year, so that's going to change. So the FY twenty twenty six spending plan, you'll notice in the memo, is about a hundred thousand dollars difference increase above the numbers that we presented at OALC last month. That's the result of the statewide adjustments as part of the FY twenty twenty six spending bill that the legislature passed. So those are increases for or or changes for health insurance costs, technology fees, retirement fees and and whatnot. The FY twenty twenty six spending plan also includes an increase in continuously appropriated spending compared to the FY twenty twenty six plan we presented last year. This increase is approximately eight hundred thousand dollars and is primarily for security related projects to ensure that ASRS and member data is safe and secure. In addition to those security projects, we'll continue to work on several other IT development projects, including winding down of some long running IT projects, as well as new projects to meet mandatory state baking requirements and make changes to our public websites to ensure compliance with federal regulations. The second part of this agenda item is FY twenty twenty seven spending plan and the appropriated budget request. So as Athena mentioned, this is the third consecutive year where our request, where we are not requesting an increase to our appropriation to the legislature and the governor. The FY twenty twenty seven spending plan includes sufficient resources to continue our work, to retain current staff with salary administration planning and variable compensation. We'll also continue to prioritize IT projects that were previously mentioned, as well as includes the flexibility to add or substitute projects as the need arises. So those are my brief comments on the administrative spending plan. I'll turn it over to James to discuss the investment spending plans for twenty six, twenty seven.
Thank you, Jeremy. My name is James Smolitz, I'm the Senior Investment Operations Analyst in the IMD Division. Thank you, Chair Miller and trustees of the board for the opportunity to present today. I'm presenting the ASRS Investment Management Division Budget. We're under the direction of our Chief Investment Officer, Mr. Mike Viteri. And this is our spending plan for fiscal years twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven for your review and consideration today. As indicated in the memo, the spending plan for both years gives the expenditures that the ASRS management believes are necessary and appropriate to achieve our stated investment goals. If you'll note on page fifty eight of the materials, which is now up, it outlines the major categories of the investment expenditures. As mentioned before, the largest portion of the spend is related to the the fees associated with the internal and external management of the ASRS assets that are held in both public and private markets. You'll notice slight increase in the projected investment management fees in private market assets from fiscal year twenty twenty seven to twenty twenty six. This would mainly be due to portfolio growth, which enables a more attractive risk return proposition than just public markets alone. And overall, the outlook, as you'll note, for the operational costs remains relatively steady across the years. The ASRS Investment Management Team continues to be cognizant of the actual and proposed costs when it engages the services of external consultants and providers, either as staff extension or legal or financial experts. And we work to identify and employ the right complement of resources, tools, and systems that allow for efficient management compliance and performance reporting. For these reasons, we do expect that there will be changes to the spending plan over the course of the fiscal years due to different workflow processes or comply with legislative changes. But overall, we expect this to be a relatively stable projection. And with that, does the board have any questions or comments about the Investment Management Division's plans?
Any questions or concerns? Those of us on OALC have already heard this and commend you for all of your hard work and and presentation on this. Well, this is an action item, and so is there a motion regarding Agenda Item Six A?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve the following. The proposed updated administrative spending plan of thirty seven million nine hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars for the fiscal year twenty twenty six, which includes legislative and executive statewide adjustments and the updated continuously appropriated investment spending plan of two hundred and eighty nine million, three hundred and thirty five thousand for the fiscal year twenty twenty six, subject to revised management projections and to include private markets, performance incentives, and other fees when identified and paid.
Do we have a second? We have a motion by Trustee Weber and a second by Trustee Connolly. Please call the roll, the roll.
Thank you. Hearing a motion by Sarah Weber and a second by Tom Connolly. I will take a roll call vote for the motion to approve Agenda Item Number Six A as stated. Please answer I or name when I call your name. Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Connolly. Dr. Essex.
Aye.
Mr. Keon.
Aye.
Ms. Landis.
Aye.
Mr. Petkunis.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairman Miller, the vote has been taken.
Thank you. We need a motion regarding Item Six B. Do we have that motion?
And just a quick question, do these two need to be separate motions or can it be one motion together? One, okay. Mr. Chair, Sarah Weber, I move that the board approve the following. An appropriated budget request for fiscal year twenty twenty seven in the amount of twenty eight million, nine hundred and sixty six thousand, one hundred dollars, with an understanding there will be changes to the total appropriated budget amount due to legislative and executive recommendations. And the proposed administrative spending plan of thirty eight million, two hundred and thirty seven thousand, one hundred dollars and continuously appropriated investment spending plan of three hundred and two million, eight hundred and thirty three thousand dollars for the fiscal year twenty twenty seven, subject to revised management projections and to include private markets, performance incentives, and other fees when identified and paid.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
This is Trustee Petkunis, I second the motion.
We have a motion by Trustee Weber and a second by Trustee Petkunis. Please call the roll.
Hearing a motion by Sarah Weber and a second by Jay Petkunis. I will take a roll call vote for the motion to approve Agenda Item Six B as stated. Please answer I or name when I call your name. Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Connolly.
Aye.
Dr. Essex.
Aye.
Mr. Keon. Ms. Landis.
Aye.
Mr. Petkunis.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairperson Miller, the vote has been taken.
Thank you. Motion passed unanimously. With that, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Seven. Presentation, Discussion, and Appropriate Action With regard to the Actuarial Experience Study for the period ending June thirty, twenty twenty four. Dr. Madsen, do you kick this one off? Okay.
Directly into GRS if you like.
There we go. Morning.
Morning.
Well, good morning, everyone. It's great to be back here in Phoenix. I was very happy that it wasn't too hot this morning on our walkover. Much appreciated. Also, welcome to our new board members. Before we get going, I just wanted to just touch real briefly on why we're here. Because this is a pretty big topic and to be thrown into it can be a little bit difficult. So we're here to present the results of the experience study. And so an experience study is just a regularly scheduled review of the assumptions and methods that are used in the actuarial evaluation. We know that assumptions will change over time, there'll be new behaviors. We'll have things like COVID that could affect the way that that people terminate or retire that can also have some impact on salary increases and some mortality experience, obviously. And so we go through this process every four or five years to look at the assumption set that was in use. How does that compare to what's actually happened over the last five to ten years? And then we make tweaks to those assumptions to better model future anticipated experience. And just the general process, again, will come with recommendations to the board. You review them, you ask your questions, and then ultimately the board will approve the assumption set used in the valuation. The assumptions we're presenting today will be used first in the July one, twenty twenty five valuation if approved by the board. And so we can jump right in on page sixty one of two forty three, or we'll go to sixty three. This is just a quick summary, and we're going to go into some detail on a lot of these, a lot of these findings here. But this is just the the really quick review of what we found. So first, the inflation rate, so the rate that underlies all of our economic assumptions, a little bit of an increase from two point three to two point four percent. The investment rate of return assumption, maintaining at seven percent. The PBI assumption, we have a PBI assumption built into the valuation, it's currently point three percent per year. We recommend maintaining that rate. And then, as you'll see in a little bit, we're going to make a little bit of a tweak to that to that particular assumption and how it's utilized as we move through time. Individual salary increases, we're going to increase the wage inflation, which is the sum of inflation and productivity from two point nine percent to three percent. And we have the payroll growth rate, but I think this is much easier to be thought of as the amortization payment growth rate. We recommend a little bit of an increase in that from two point seven five, two point seven to two point eight five. On the mortality side, we're not making any recommendations. We've actually built a mortality table that's specific to your experience and it's doing a really good job of modeling your experience, so no need to change there. And then the demographic side, we're making some tweaks to the retirement rates, the termination rates, and the disability rates. And then finally, we have this this assumption, because the normal form of payment for a retiree is a straight life annuity. But if the annuitant dies before the entire, their account balance is used to pay their benefits, they would get a refund of what's remaining in their account balance. And so given that our contribution rates are now starting to to creep up a little higher than they have been historically, those balances as a result are also higher. And so we're recommending to increase the amount of the balance that can pay benefits from three years to now four years. So just a really slight, a slight tweak to that particular assumption. So we move to the next slide, page sixty four. We'll start with inflation. As I said, inflation underlies all of our economic assumptions. It's an investment return assumption, salary increase assumption, that overall payroll growth rate. And as we all know, I don't think this is a surprise to anyone, we've seen pretty high inflation recently. So last five years averaging about four point two percent, ten years, three percent, and then the longer thirty year average is about two and a half percent. On the next slide, this is just a summary of some of the inputs or some of the the data that we collect to help form our opinion and our decision on a recommendation. And you can see that, you know, all of these different sources, they're right in about in about the same neighborhood here between two point two. We got the lowest at two percent, but two point two to two point four percent. Our current assumption is that green bar, that two point three percent recommendation is two point four percent. And then one of the biggest inputs that we have here that we can use is GRS as a firm performs a. is GRS as a firm performs a survey each and every year where we go out and then uh, survey investment consulting firms. Danny and I are actuaries, we're not uh, investment consultants. And so we need to look to outside sources uh, to help us determine this uh, particular assumption. In this most recent survey, the expectation for inflation of the average is around two point four one percent. So we take all this into consideration. We think it's appropriate to increase that inflation rate uh, just slightly to two point four percent.
Paul, is the uh, twenty year bond market, is that the nominal tips differential?
It is, yes.
It's interesting, the twenty years higher than the thirty years. So what that tells you is inflation expectations are higher for the first twenty years and lower in the last ten. When you compare the twenty and the thirty year.
So we'll move on to this slide uh, sixty six here. And I really love this chart. I think in the past, we've we've talked about, I think, what I'm going to call everyone's favorite actuarial equation, C plus I equals B plus E. Contributions plus investment earnings over the long run have to equal benefit payments plus expenses. And this chart here does a really great job of explaining what that means. So basically, what we have here are three different return scenarios, so projected returns. And then we also have broken up the percentage of benefits that will be paid by contributions versus those that will be paid by investment earnings. If we look at the the middle one, the seven percent return, roughly forty percent of the benefit payments, assuming a seven percent return will be paid through contributions to the plan, and the remaining sixty percent will be paid through earnings. And so this is the whole reason we have a trust fund is to use investment earnings to pay those benefit payments. Otherwise, you'd have to have a hundred percent of your contributions coming in to pay benefit payments. So you can see just the efficiencies that are created through a funding of pension plan. But as we change those return assumptions, those uh, that share between contributions and investment earnings go up or down. And so if we assume a lower investment return assumption, we're going to have to use more contributions to pay benefit payments because we won't have as much future earnings. On the flip side, if we were to increase our discount rate or rate of return assumption to eight percent, we could rely on, we would theoretically be relying on more investment earnings to pay those benefit payments as opposed to contributions. And so sort of the key relationship to keep in mind, lower return assumption, higher contributions and vice versa. On slide sixty seven, uh, I mean, this is so true. There's there's no single correct answer. There's that classic joke, if you put five actuaries in a room, you'll get seven different answers. And that's sort of what we have here with uh, with our investment return assumption. And so we're really looking just to be in a reasonable range and have a reasonable assumption that we can use to go forward and model the plan as you move through time. We do have a pretty robust uh, process for selecting an investment rate of return assumption. First of all, we look at your own target asset allocation. We're not setting the PSPRS investment return rate or the COPERS rate. We're looking at how ASRS uh, is invested. We look at those capital market assumptions. I alluded to the survey that we uh, do each and every year of the investment consultants. We receive information from all those folks. We build a model that we can overlay your asset allocation onto and will give us an idea of what the expected ten, twenty and thirty year returns are. We also look to your own investment consultants, NEPC, the outside consultant, to give us some uh, guidance on what their expectations are. Those are the folks that are helping you invest your money, so they have a pretty good handle on things. We have a couple of other items to consider that don't directly help us set this, but it helps us understand how this assumption could change over time. First, historical investment performance. If you were to look at the history of that survey that GRS has performed over the last ten years, you start to see some patterns. And so in years in which investment returns are very high, the next year's survey comes out with a lower expectation. And then in years where there's been very low returns, the next year will come out with a much higher expectation. And so we can take that into consideration, start to think about well, what, you know, what happened the last year, the last couple of years, and how is that going to form our opinion of how we're going to uh, see expected returns over time? And then comparison with peers, again, not something that we would directly use to set the assumption, but you know, there is some comfort in being uh, in a uh, in a range that other public sector pension plans are in as well, and that we don't want to be an outlier. And I think the next chart here on page sixty eight, this shows us how investment return assumptions have changed over time. And this is a uh, chart that the National Association of State Retirement Administrators puts out on a really regular basis. And at first, you know, you look at that and say, well, how in the world do I read that? Um, so we'll kind of break it down a little bit. If you move all the way over to the two thousand and one, all the way to uh, my extreme left here, that big blue block in the middle, those are plans that used an eight percent rate of return assumption. And you can see that as we move through time, that big blue block, it starts to move up. And so we're seeing fewer and fewer plans add that eight percent assumption. And you can look at the the twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen uh, columns there. Your plan was in that big blue section there. And so you were moving up and at that point, uh, we may have started to be considered a bit of an outlier at that point. But as we've gone through time, that old blue block is now being replaced with the new blue block, and that's a seven percent assumption. And that's where you're at right now with a seven percent assumption. And so we've done a lot of heavy lifting. This board has made a lot of very difficult decisions over the last uh, eight years to bring that investment return assumption down from eight percent to the current place of seven percent. On the next slide, our recommendation is to maintain the seven percent uh, return. And so here's just some of the uh, the metrics that we looked at. Our short term survey, the GRS survey yielded about a ten year seven, uh, ten year return of seven percent. NEPC was a bit higher than that at seven and a half percent. Our longer term, so the twenty to thirty year period was about a seven and a half percent. And then the NEPC long term was uh, north of eight. So you might look at that and say, well, how in the world are we going to, why are you recommending maintaining that assumption of seven percent? And I think it's a valid question. It's a question that we're getting from a lot of our, a lot of our clients. Uh, we feel that it's a, it's a really good balance of risk and reward. This plan is is unique in a sense that employee contributions are changing each and every year. And so if we were to increase that rate of return assumption to say seven and a half percent, it might make people happy in the short term because the rates would come down a little bit. Remember our relationships from earlier. The rates would come down a bit, but then that puts a lot of risk on the plan. Because there's that chance that that rate needs to come back down in the future, and we've already, we've already seen that play out. And it was uh, it wasn't the most painless uh, thing that we've gone through in terms of contribution rates. And so to avoid this up and down pattern, we think it's better just to take a more long term, consistent approach. Keep the assumption is where it's at, and if actual returns end up being that eight point seven percent over thirty years, there's nothing that, nothing really but good that could come out of that. And so we'll continue to fund based on the seven percent. Uh, but you're with the the knowledge that the expectation is a little bit higher than that. And so that will gradually push rates down naturally over time as opposed to dropping them today. So I wanted to pause there because this is a pretty big decision and one that I want to make sure that everyone is comfortable with the rationale.
Any questions?
All right. Uh, the last item for me for a little bit here on slide uh, seventy. This is the PBI assumption. And so the PBI is based on excess earnings of the fund. And so if the ten year value and that we use the actuarial value return as a proxy for this is greater than eight percent, then a PBI balance can then be funded. And once that balance is sufficient enough to pay a one percent PBI, it is paid out to the eligible members. It's not discretionary, so it's a known formula, so we we can measure it uh, very precisely each and every year. And then once that money is allocated to that PBI fund, it can't be pulled out. It also cannot go down. And so you take that in all into consideration. And on the next slide here, you know, there has to be a positive value to uh, an arrangement like that. But if you were to look at our valuation where we're assuming a seven percent return each and every year, we're actually not taking into consideration any excess earnings. And so we have to do an additional analysis to determine what is the average PBI that could be paid over time, because there will be volatility of returns. There will be ups, there will be downs. We're not going to hit seven percent each and every year going forward. Sir.
Sorry, um, Paul, just to be clear. The, if the ten year return is above eight percent, uh, the excess is available for PBI. So does that mean we're, we're charting an ongoing rolling ten year return annually? And so at any given point in time, the the preceding ten years, the return has to have averaged eight percent?
That's correct, yes. So the way it's, the way it's done is we calculate, we use what's called an actuarial value of assets. And it smooths in returns over a ten year period. And the proxy for the ten year return is the year to year uh, return on the actuarial value of assets. So on slide twelve, uh, one of the interesting items, and this is something that that we discovered in the last experience study, is that the expected rate of return did not have as much impact on the expected PBI as we would have first thought. The main driver here is volatility of returns. And so the more volatility that we have in our returns, the higher the likelihood that a PBI would be paid. And the lower volatility, the lower the likelihood of a PBI being paid. And so we ran the model using uh, different levels of volatility. So the historical uh, ten to twelve year volatility of eight percent. Uh, the NEPC expectation of ten point nine, and then what I call the extreme volatility scenario of sixteen percent. You can see how that impacts that uh, um, that expected uh, future PBI. So we are recommending that we maintain that point three percent using the historical uh, volatility as our, our base. And that also takes into consideration where we are right now. Um, there is a, a low likelihood of a PBI being paid in the short term unless we have some really great outperformance. And so we do not want to uh, assume too high of a PBI and then not have one paid and be funding on something that that we know is probably not going to materialize over the next few years. So on slide seventy three, there's just one other nuanced change uh, that I mentioned. When we instituted this PBI assumption uh, back in two thousand and seventeen, because there was no assumption at that point, uh, we came up with a strategy uh, where we would actually hold back gains. And so a year in which a PBI was not paid, we reserved that liability in our liability that we use to calculate our contribution rate. And so we would go through time and we would have a couple of years of gains that we reserved. And then a PBI would be paid, we would release those gains. There'd be no disruption whatsoever to the, the contribution rate because of that strategy. If we didn't have that strategy in place, we would see drops in the contribution rate because no PBI was paid. A PBI was paid, it would spike back up, and we'd see this really odd pattern, right? And so we decided that uh, um, a better strategy would be to reserve these PBI gains so that when a PBI is paid, we'll have the money already in the liabilities to cover the cost of that PBI being paid. We've gone a few years now without a PBI. And so um, we've accumulated, it'll be roughly three years of of PBI, that point three percent, so about one percent of the liabilities um, so far. And we know that the minimum amount of a PBI that can be paid is one percent. And so our recommendation is to effectively hold back three years worth of PBI gains. And so as we get to the next valuation, we're actually going to see a little bit of a gain in the PBI because there won't be a PBI that's going to be paid. And so each year we'll see those little bits of gains, but then once that one percent PBI is paid, we're going to have the money in the trust already to, to be able to, to cover that amount at the point at which it's paid. And so this is just a, in a, an expansion of the, the current strategy, but just to make sure that our PBI reserve, if you will, doesn't grow to be too large. Okay, any questions on, on, on the PBI?
All right.
All right, very good. We're going to move on to uh, salary increases. These are, we have to make an assumption about active members for projecting out retirement benefits. Projecting a whole slew of information, you know, whether they make it to retirement or not, but among that, if they make it to retirement, what is that retirement benefit going to be? And part of that is the final average paid benefit. You have to figure out what, what the salary is. So within that, we uh, it's, it's an all inclusive salary assumption. Don't think of it as like how much of it is budgeted for a salary increase for an agency. It's actually a much more comprehensive than that. Um, so members uh, receive salary increases due to promotions. Uh, as they get additional certifications and additional job responsibilities or salary increases built there. And they may switch a job, so they may go from one agency to another and a promotion that, so we're, we're reflecting those type of occurrences as well. Um, and so what you'll see is we go to the next slide, our salary assumption isn't just a a point blank assumption, but it's actually a service based assumption. So if we start here, what we're looking at is you've got years of service across the X axis, the, the annual salary increase across the Y. And the uh, the blue line represents what's the current assumption. And you can see it's uh, it starts up higher as somebody starts their year, you know, their career in ASRS, and then moves down over time as they fulfill their career, you know, as salary increases still occur, but those items of training, promotions occur with less frequency. What we can see here, uh, I'm going to move to the green line, and uh, this is where we go from uh, actuarial science to kind of an actuarial art, and that is we look at the actual experience uh, year over year and um, from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty two, which is about seven years of experience, that largely tracked uh, what the assumption was. And then we saw the last couple of years, uh, really a phenomenon or anomaly uh, in terms of what the, what the pay increases were for, for ASRS members. This is not isolated to ASRS. We saw this phenomenon across the country to all public sector employees across all the different types, whether the state, uh, public safety, firefighters, educators. Um, and I think it's due to a number of occurrences. You had recently high uh, CPI. You had budgets, state budgets that were flush, agency budgets that were flush, able to be passed down. Um, you know, the other thing with inflation, that actually helps state budgets because um, the underlying uh, products and things that you're being taxed on is going up in price. So um, we're, and then the other part is the uh, competition with the private sector for, for, for a workforce. So um, they've had to make adjustments, and this is again, this is uh, a short term anom- anomaly, we believe. In other words, it would be inappropriate to assume or to extrapolate saying what happened the last couple of years is going to happen for the next twenty or thirty. Um, so that's where it comes in our, we're going to recognize some increase in the proposed assumption, which is kind of the, that lined um, right above the current assumption. What that incorporates is kind of an overall thought of, hey, there's going to be a little more inflation going forward. But you know, it's the, this, the recent experience will trend down. And then also understand that this is really a long term assumption, a twenty to thirty year assumption over a career employee. So we're not trying to model or predict what's happening in the short term, short term business cycles. Uh, if we were to show it year by year, you're going to have some years above um, the the assumption, you're going to have some years below the assumption. Um, so this is, you know, the, and actually is, is, you know, when you see this and it doesn't look like the big change, it's actually the largest change we're making in the uh, in the experience study. Um, so this has an increase in the cost. There's going to be some other, other items that are, that are working the other way. But um, in terms of the cost increase that Paul will show later, this is, this is the big one.
We go to the next slide. I just have one comment, Danny. You, Danny brought up a good point about, you know, the short term. What if the short term is different than the long term? And we've talked a lot uh, in this room about the funding policy. And we have a really strong funding policy in place to be able to deal with that short term uh, variation from the assumption. And so that's what gives us also some comfort in not taking that salary increase assumption all the way up to those twenty three, twenty four levels. If we didn't have a funding policy in place, then you know, we might come to a slightly different decision. But again, very strong funding policy, very well run fund. And so we think that focusing on that long term is, is much more vital uh, for our decision making today.
All right. Thank you, Paul. So now we're on to the payroll growth assumption, or as Paul noted, the amortization growth policy. So uh, you collect contributions uh, on the payroll, the active members, that's your revenue source. So even though your contribution rate may or may not change, uh, the underlying payroll that, that you're collecting those contributions have a, have an implicit or explicit assumption about how that's going to change and amortized over the future years. And uh, the current assumption is two point seven percent per year. And we're recommending that to increase to two eight five. Some of that goes with the, it just kind of goes hand in hand with the individual salary increase assumption. That's, you know, we're making increases there, so you can think of the payroll growth. And then also And then also uh you think of uh the state of Arizona, it's a growing state. Um and there's been some active or so, there's been an increase in active membership that's going to drive um uh payroll growth to be higher. So I think um, you know, this, it's, it's warranted on this part. In, in combination with the funding policy that Paul noted uh previously.
Um Mr. Chairman, uh I guess a comment and maybe Paul, you might want to comment. I like the idea of maybe reframing this as a amortization growth policy because I know talking to employers post Great Recession, I often got pushback on payroll growth assumptions because they would say, Renee, I haven't hired an employee in X years. We haven't given raises in Y years. And it's, and there's so much that goes into payroll growth besides, you know, raises and it's like, well, have you added employees or, you know, and there's a lot that goes into it. And I like the idea of reframing the issue to get away from some of those knee jerk reactions. Um and so I really like that concept. So just kind of sharing that. And, and I think that's an interesting way to, to reframe the concept and why um and then, and one, the term, and then hearing you guys describe it just now. I don't know. I think that might actually help in particular employers understand the need to go from say 2.7 to 2.85. So I really like that, that, that reframing.
And then can I add him? Paul, correct me if I'm, i- if I'm not precise. But we, we, as I think of it, we've got a um open but uh closed but replacement group way of thinking of it. So even though the population on population set expectationally might grow as the state grows, you are not doing what you would call an open group analysis, but you ha- are having replacement employees coming in.
That's right.
So it's a closed group, replacement group analysis that you're doing. And anything that comes in with an expanded workforce, because the uh, the aggregate state is growing would be sort of a plus as far as amortizing unfunded liabilities. Is that correct?
That's right. That's right. And you also think, you know, if, if the population's growing, you look at what, what's the type of population? Um you know, if you're having retirees come in, well, you don't need educators. If you're having new uh, if the if your population increases is uh retirees. Um so you know, there's more that goes into it than, than just population growth. Uh i- it does go to services, service needs.
I think one, you know, one other um item to consider, payroll growth in excess of 2.85, I think like Paul said, is, is only a, a benefit for the plan, really. So if you think about if you're collecting contributions on a hundred dollars worth of pay and your contribution rate's 10%, you're going to get $10 into the fund. But if your actual pay is a hundred and fifty dollars, you're now getting $15 into the fund. So you're getting a lot more dollars into the fund. And so you're going to pay down those unfunded liabilities much, much quicker. And so uh you, the average payroll growth over the last 10 years has, you know, been four and a half percent. The last three years, 7%, 10%, 6%. So we've seen tremendous growth, not only in payroll, but then also in headcount, which is contributing to all of that. So I s- you know, still feel like 2.85 is, is still on a, on the conservative side. You know, provided that, you know, headcount doesn't start to decrease dramatically.
So, so the um growth, uh you're, you're, you're increasing contributions, but uh it helped me if I'm thinking about this wrong, but the, you're also um booking li- uh retirement liabilities uh as well for every year of service for that uh employee, right? So you're saying there's a positive delta there that's um. Benefit liabilities?
Yes, I think one of the ways to think about it is you just, you just alluded to, to what we call the normal cost, which is the cost of accruing one year's worth of benefits. And the contributions are comprised of two pieces. First, the normal cost, we keep up with those accruals. And then secondarily, which is affected by this particular assumption, is how quickly are we planning to pay off the unfunded accrued liability? So the difference between the accrued liability in the assets on hand. The normal cost, what's interesting about the normal cost is you could have five members theoretically, or you could have 500,000 members. And the percent of paid contributions aren't going to be any different between those two. And so that's going to remain stable. It's this other piece that is going to be impacted by uh payroll growth a lot quicker. And so if we said we have a, a 10% contribution going towards the unfunded accrued liability, assuming a 2.85% growth, our growth exceeds that, that's where you're going to get the dollars coming into the plan that are going to go a lot quicker to paying the, that off.
Yeah. Comes down to, we, we have an expectation for certain dollars to come in. And when you actually get more contributions than you expect, then that's a positive or plus. Puts downward pressure on future contribution requirements. All right, we go to the next slide, please. Uh moving on demographic assumption. So uh mortality, when we talk about mortality, there's several mortality assumptions. This is by far the most important of the post retirement. So after somebody moves into retirement status, starts drawing a pension benefit, how long are they going to, going to receive a pension benefit? As Paul alluded to uh earlier, uh the mortality table that was put in place in the last experience study was built based on actual ASRS retiree experience. There are separate tables for gender. Uh the way it's put in there, they note it's weighted by size, the annuities benefit. You think of it, um somebody who's got a larger benefit uh carries more weight or so and developing the assumption versus if you're just counting noses. Um and that the idea is the larger the benefit, generally the healthier choices that somebody's going to make in terms of eating, healthcare, uh you know, basic needs, taking their, taking care of the health, whatnot. So there's a, there's a rationale behind it. So we looked through the actual experience. Obviously COVID-19 uh had a negative impact, especially on those uh age 85 plus. Um and then at the younger ages, they had under, underlying conditions. Um this is more of a one time um type event that, that is playing its way through now and, and things are projected to go back towards more normal. Um and then also within our mortality assumption, we have projected improvement that's built in uh each year. So somebody who turns um age 65, 20 years from now is going to have a longer life expectancy uh than somebody who's aged 65 now. So there's already in it, that expected improvement already built in. So that's why small, actually no change this year. And then you would think in future years, as we track and monitor experience, the changes are going to be much smaller. So something that used to be a big deal as, you know, as we go through and and make improvements in our, our assumption setting process, this has become pretty, pretty benign. We go to the next slide. Uh we discuss the different um mortality assumptions. We go pre-retirement, there's a more separate assumption for those who die while an active member. And then um also there's disabled members and they have a different uh life expectancy and probabilities. Let's say a healthy um or regular retiree. And so we have different mortality assumptions built in for those. Since the credibility, statistical credibility um is not there like it is for healthy retirees, we have to rely more on published tables. The Society of Actuaries have uh in shorthand brief, it's pub 2010, these are tables that were issued, I think around 2016, but based on our, 2019, but based on data through, through 2010, um just on public sector experience by itself. So these are uh industry standard, uh best practice um in terms of assumptions for, with regard to these, these particular and much smaller, less significant mortality assumptions. Okay, go to the next slide. Uh we're, we're going to go into retirement and termination. So we have um actually if we go one, one more slide over, you know, we talked about retirements. Retirement assumption is not a single point age. It's actually a, it's based on the age and it goes more deeply into how many years of service because retirement eligibility not only depends on what age, but how much, how much service you have. Early retirement starts at age 50 with five years of service. And for tier one, normal retirement at age 65, or you can be age 62 with 10 years of service, we have the rule of 80. So you have a number of different combinations. Uh and you can see on the age base that um how the uh how the proposed assumption in the current overlap each other. So you see the solid line being the assumption versus the actual experience. Um and again, this you know, in, in, in our profession and our, our judgment, you know, there's not enough difference to warrant uh a change in the assumption.
Mr. Chair, just sorry, quick question on this graph. So the current expected, I don't see that. Is that not showing up on the?
It's overlapping because there's no change. There's no change. So the current and proposed overlap each other. Yep.
Thank you.
Kind of sneaky there on our part. We go to the next slide. We go through on um termination rates. So actually you'll find that uh the majority of members, when they become active members, don't actually make it to retirement. Most of them terminate prior to becoming a retirement. Uh we look, we have two separate assumptions because the pattern or, or the experience shows that there's different behaviors, kind of when you become a cohort or, or new member in the system, those under age 35 and after 35, and then of course separate tables based on gender. We're going to show you a small change for the um, for the assumption prior to age 35 and then no change after. So we go to the next slide. Um you can see how, how, yes, sir.
Um just uh, it's my own curiosity. On the terminations, um does the behavior matter? So, so for example, you're, you're getting um people prior to age 35 retiring more, hired before age 35. You can take uh a lump sum or you can take an annuity. Does that behavior matter at all?
Um I, I don't think it does at the younger ages. Um you know, it um, I think they're looking more for jobs and careers. You know, if you look at surveys about why did somebody, why did somebody leave employment? And I got to be clear, I got to clarify here. Then when you leave employment, if you go from one agency in ASRS to another agency in ASRS, that's not considered a termination. That's continued service and continued earning of benefits. This was a termination in this sense or definition is somebody who's an active member in ASRS and then becomes an inactive member. Uh no longer contributing into the system. So went somewhere, you know, they get the private sector. And so they're thinking of, you know, I think at the younger ages, they're thinking more of um uh job opportunities, salary opportunities, promotions, you know, other outside forces other than what are my options I can get from the retirement plan? So we look here, uh back to the table, we have uh, you can see how closely um the actual experience matches to the current, you know, we are making uh some, some increases in the termination rate uh at the younger s- uh service intervals. But it's largely, this is, this is relatively small change, you know, it's um uh it's under age 35. We go to the next slide for entry age above 35. And this is where we're not make um not making a change. Um you can see it really closely matches. And again, you can see where the rates and, and this is something that's common across all, you know, all industries, all public sector. Um but you see how the rates of termination are fairly high in the first five, six years of, of service. And then you find, you know, that's when you're most likely determiner, find, hey, is this, is this where I want to have a career or not? And then after that, for various reasons, you know, the, the rates of termination or probability of leaving employment somewhere else back to the private sector become much smaller. Okay, we go to the next slide. Okay, so we talked about uh two of the reasons or three of the reasons people can um an active member can become inactive or cease. That's um death, uh retirement termination, the fourth is disability. Uh so an active member could become disabled and move to the LTD plan. Um disability instances have moved down over the years. We go to the next slide. This has been a common occurrence and we've studied it in depth. You know, I apologize for the scale on the Y axis, but what it shows you is just the relative magnitude of the change. So like you take age 45 to 49, looks like a big change. That we're, we're recommending, it's actually about one tenth of a percent. So these are, this is a really minor assumption. And we're showing it more for completeness. Okay, next slide. Um so Mr. Conley asked about um, you know, people that terminate, wh- whether or not they uh uh you know, do they take a lump sum of their employee contributions or for their benefit? We have an assumption for that. Um shows you the depth of, of the assumptions used in evaluation. Um at the initial year, 25% are assumed to uh uh take a refund, 75% at that time is a deferred benefit. And then once you're in that deferral status, um we look at the options and given year going forward. And these are minor assumptions and again showing you for completeness, some of the underlying behavior if you get these, these inactive members. Okay, other assumptions? Promise we're coming to an end on these. Uh if you go to the next slide. Okay, um we have an assumption regarding the healthcare insurance. So 50% of future retirees elect uh receive a so again, we're an active membership, we're projecting now when somebody gets to retirement. Again, we're projecting behaviors now. So and not just behaviors on the pension plan, which is automatic. Now we're talking about the healthcare plan, health insurance plan. So 50% of future retirees elect to receive health insurance supplement and of the 50% that are assumed, you know, it's half of those will have a dependent premium uh you know, with, with coverage. During act, when somebody's actually in healthcare status and receiving a healthcare supplement, we actually know what the member is. Uh and if they have a ben- if they have a beneficiary, we know the beneficiary characteristics, name of the age and gender and stuff. But while they're an active employee and we're projecting them out, that's kind of unknown. So there's assumptions we built in there, namely, we assume 100% are married. And I, and then of those, um husbands are three years older than spouses. And then Paul uh mentioned earlier about the uh, about the modified cash refund going from three to four years and explain that. So no need to cover that again.
All right, we've got four slides and we'll land the plane. We just move on to the LTD plan. So for the LTD plan, it's a little bit unique. We need to have recovery assumptions. And so we look to this, this 2012 table, um which is sort of surprising, has been updated in some time, but um this is a standard table that takes into consideration the waiting period for your disability benefits. And then the different types of recovery that uh, that members can have. Uh continues to be appropriate, it's doing a fine enough job uh for the LTD plan. The offsets and the incurred but not reported assumptions are reasonable. Uh recent losses on the LTD plan because the benefit is directly tied to salary. Uh salary has been a source of a loss. So that's going to, we changed that assumption, it's going to increase those um uh that costs just a touch. But then as Danny talked about earlier, we're lowering those disability rates um, you know, fairly significantly from where they were. And so that's going to push down the active liabilities for the LTD plan. The system assumptions on the next slide. The system, as I think everyone knows, is a, a group of um, a rather um or an older population that have been around for a while. And there was a group for a time whose benefits were guaranteed by the state. Everyone who was in that group has passed away. Um so now we just are left with this group of system members whose benefits are being funded through the ASRS plan valuation. And so we use the same assumptions and methods for the system group that we use for uh the plans, the discount rate of mortality assumptions are the ones that uh will impact this particular valuation. So no change to our system benefits or system valuations. Now we get into the, the impact of all of these assumption changes on slide 30 here, 90 of 243. And uh what we did is we took the June 30, 2024 valuation. We ran that under this new assumption set that we're recommending. And you see that the total accrued liability goes up by about point four percent. Our unfunded liability goes up to uh 18.98 billion dollars. And that funded ratio takes a little bit of a step back, 74 to 73.7. I went back and I looked at the 2017 experience study, uh you know, while we're in the meeting earlier. And you know, I, I had mentioned earlier, that was a pretty massive experience study. And there was a, I think it was 7.6% drop in the funded ratio as a result of that uh particular experience study. The 2020 experience study was about uh 3%. The twenty twenty experience study was about a three percent drop. And so, you know, this small point three percent really just shows you, you know, this particular study was, was not a majorly impactful one. So the assumptions and methods are doing a really a nice job. You will notice that the estimated rate, though, is creeping up just a touch. The main reason for that, you know, with a small change in the liabilities, but the normal cost as a percent of pay. So what is that cost of accruing that one year's worth of benefits? It did come up as a result of the salary increases in the way that the salary scales are, are constructed. The expectation here, you know, we were at eleven point eight six. If we would have ran this valuation, that number would have been twelve point oh three. We do expect that this rate is going to creep down a little bit over the next couple of years. So when we do the valuation, the seven one twenty twenty five valuation, there's a pretty good chance that we may not see much of a movement in that eleven point eight six, that it might just stay right, right in that neighborhood because of the expected decrease in the contribution and then adding back in these new assumptions. We won't know that for a couple of months, though. Finally, thirty one, the impact of the LTD valuation. Really not a lot of, not a lot of movement on this. And we saw the increase in the liabilities from the salary, a reduction in the, due to the decrease in the disability rates. So those sort of offset each other. Our funded ratio is just changing slightly. And then for this plan, the contribution rate is expected to go down three basis points. And this is tied again to that normal cost amount that's really reliant upon those disability rate assumptions. Lowering the disability rate assumptions lowers that normal cost. A slide thirty two just brings everything together. This is the, the standard slide that we show each year as part of the valuation presentation. Again, you can see this is the total contribution rate. So under the new assumptions, twenty four point two eight. It was twenty four. So again, we might see it a little bit of an increase, but depending on how experience plays out, we may see not a lot of movement in that particular rate. The alternate contribution rate would have been three basis points lower, nine point seven two instead of nine seven five. And then there's all of our funded ratios. So just, you know, slight reduction in those point two to point three percent. So again, not a whole lot of movement here. The important piece down at the bottom there, the projected data full funding remains unchanged. So we're still on schedule to be a hundred percent funded. That's a direct byproduct of the strong funding policy that's in place right now. Finally, this is the very last slide, I promise. You know, again, we believe that this assumption set is going to do a, a better job, a slightly better job than, than the old assumption set. And it's going to provide that stability in those contribution rates, which again is quite important because the decisions that are made here indirectly affect our membership in ways that other plans may not, may not see. We will be issuing a full report that has a lot of the detail. So I know that everyone's very excited about that. So if you have any insomnia, this might be the cure for it. In the past, the last couple of, last couple of experience studies, we have implemented a phase in of the contribution rate. And that really was, was because those changes were just so big in those two experience studies. With the way that I see things playing out, I'm, I'm really hoping that a phase in isn't necessary. But once we have the valuation results at seven one twenty five, we'll be able to develop a strategy to see if a phase in is necessary. Or if there's a very little movement around that current eleven point eight six percent contribution, we may be able to, to just implement these and just move forward without thinking about a phase in. So you have that to look forward to at the, the November board meeting where we'll have that discussion when we present the valuation results.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, one of the comments I think Paul made about potentially smoothing in the outputs. We know that with a fairly high degree of confidence that the long term trajectory is those contribution rates that in aggregate now are approximately twelve percent are going to go to an aggregate of approximately seven percent. So they're going from twelve to seven over approximately twenty years. And to the extent that it should, if you can smooth your output such that it is close to a monotonic decay, rather than having it go up by like five basis points and then down by ten and send the wrong message. So what we want to do is make sure that it becomes fully funded over the approximately next twenty years. And then at the same time, have the contribution rates fall to approximately seven percent. And to the extent you can have this, rather than a bump in the trajectory, I think that's why you might consider smoothing the output. So accept the full input, if you will, assumption changes, but then smooth the output to make sure that it is on a, close to a linear decay. Thank you.
First of all, thank you for this report. There's a lot to digest, to say the least. So if there are, are there any other questions or? The presenters?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, I guess, for, for our Paul. To the GRS Paul's point about the smoothing for the November board meeting. When it comes to what those options might look like, would that be developed in OALC? And then come to the board maybe for consideration? Or how would that come about?
Yeah, my initial sense is it would come directly to the board. And we could do two approaches. One is that a recommendation of no smoothing or smoothing over, say, two years. Or you could come with two options, like no smoothing and here's two years. And that would be sort of the board's discretion. If the, if the, the differences are like a basis point to do basis points, it might not be worth a full presentation on that. But if it's point one percent, maybe then you would have two options that would come back for the board, for the board to consider. But I think it would go directly to the board so they see the aggregate of the information.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good point. At this time, I believe we're looking for a motion regarding the presentation or agenda item number seven.
Mr. Chair, Sarah Weber, I move to approve the adoption of the experience study and recommendations and the resulting changes in assumptions as presented by GRS on page sixty one of two hundred and forty three, two ninety four of two hundred and, sorry, two hundred and forty three of the board packet titled Arizona State Retirement System twenty twenty five Experience Study to be effective with the June thirtieth twenty twenty five valuations for the Arizona State Retirement System Pension Plan four oh one A and Health Insurance Premium Benefits Program four oh one H, the Long Term Disability Program and the System.
Chuck Essex, I second that motion.
Motion by Sarah Weber and, and second by Trust Connolly. Let's call the roll.
Hearing a motion by Sarah Weber and a second by Chuck Essex, I will take a roll call vote for the motion to approve the actuarial experience study recommendations as stated. Please answer I or N when I call your name. Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Connolly.
Aye.
Dr. Essex.
Aye.
Mr. Guin.
Aye.
Ms. Landis.
Aye.
Mr. Pachakounas.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairperson. A vote has been taken.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. At this point, we will move to agenda item number eight. Presentation, discussion, and appropriate action regarding NEPC investment reporting. Executive summary of the Investment Committee presentation. I believe this will be with Ms. Rose Dean.
Good morning. For the record, Rose Dean, partner at NEPC. Like to welcome the new members of the board and I look forward to working with you. So today I'll be presenting the one, first quarter twenty twenty five oversight report. But since it's been a while, I'll also update the market commentary year to date. If we can turn to page one hundred. Perfect, thank you. So as you'll recall, during the first quarter, the market actually sold off about four to nine percent, depending on the sector of the market. And then in the early April days, we had the Liberation Day announcement and stock market dropped another five to fifteen percent. So there was generally a broad sell America trade going on where US dollar, US stocks generally underperformed international stocks. And there was a, a flight from, from US investments. The sell off was really aggressive in the magnificent seven stocks, if you recall, since that's natural, since that's really where most of the gains had been in the past couple of years. Well, forget about all of that because right after that, the tariff announcements were taken back and, and the markets actually are now back to historical highs. If you look at the S and P five hundred, things are apparently well with everything. And just in the second quarter, the markets were, were up another five to twelve percent in the US with the large caps again leading the way. The international stocks actually are up for the year as well. And that was partially boosted by the weakness in the US dollar. So there just seems to be a lot of momentum in the market for investors looking to back and to be back in the market. And the economic data is, is really not giving us any reasons as of now as to why that should not be the case. We're seeing things stable, still continue to be stable in terms of the economic growth. So if we move to page one oh five, I think one of the more startling pictures is this US dollar weakness that, you know, we've seen persist this year. So this is just through April, but through the first half of twenty twenty five, the dollar is lower by over thirteen percent against the euro and about ten percent against the British pound and the yen. If you look at the past decade or past fifteen years, the dollar remained quite strong, even though the stock markets were, were absolutely very, very strong along with it. Typically, we see both US dollar acting as more of a flight to risk rather than a rallying together with US dollar. This, earlier this year, as I mentioned, we saw both the US stocks fall as well as a US dollar. And this is relatively unusual. And this is sort of signaling that the stock market health or the health of the investment landscape in the US is really driven by US policy rather than a global crisis of, of some sort. So final comment I'll make about the current investment landscape is that we heard the Fed chair last week speak about a, a rate cut finally. That's been requested by the administration for a while. And again, this gave another boost to the stock market. This is really interesting because if, if we think about where inflation may be going, given the tariff impact finally expected to be passed through consumer prices, as well as the fact that, you know, retail sales is relatively strong, the unemployment rate is still at four point two percent, relatively solid. So the economic data seems to be strong and potential for inflation is higher. Yet we are getting stimulus in terms of policy rates. So there are some conflicting signals in the market. But as long as the policy stands and then these rate cuts are being materialized, that will provide additional headwind to the, to the equity markets at least. So with that update, unless there are any questions, I'll jump over to the oversight report for a period ending March of twenty twenty five.
Any questions from anybody?
Okay, then we'll turn to page one thirteen. I'll sort of go over this page for the benefit of the new board members here. This is a summary of how the portfolio is meeting your ongoing objectives. And these six objectives here are specified in your strategic plan. And we provide this on a quarterly basis to say how the portfolio is doing in terms of meeting these objectives and whether we're recommending any action by the board if there are significant concerns that certain objectives are not being met or not expected to be met. We've listed the objectives here. They are basically covering whether the portfolio is maximizing returns at an acceptable level of risk. How you're performing in terms of total fund returns amongst your peers. And then whether the total fund return is meeting or exceeding your actuarial assumed rate, whether each of your asset class performance is achieving a level above its respective benchmarks. And then also whether your cash management is meeting its objectives. If you go down that goals met column, you'll see that the objective number six with respect to cash management is being met. And the rest of it is being partially met. So the common theme across the first five objectives where we say they're partially met is that these objectives are not being met in the short term, typically three months to a one year period. But over the longer term, they are being met. So we've noted that as partial. I'll go through the performance details in a few slides. But the point here is that we are not at this point recommending any actions by the board based on the scorecard. If we turn to page one fifteen. So this picture shows your historical performance as well as your peer group performance in, in quartiles. And then your policy benchmark performance compared to your total fund return. The total fund returned thirty one basis points during the first quarter. And for the trailing one year period, that return was four point eight eight percent. The portfolio did underperform the policy benchmark for that one year period. And you'll see later on in the report that underperformance was really driven by the private equity and the credit asset class versus their benchmarks. We've discussed this a lot in terms of the mismatch between the private equity and credit asset class and the public markets benchmarked, which we are using still in this report to measure their relative performance. However, just for context for the new board members, there was a new asset allocation and benchmarks approved in, in the April asset liability study recommendations. So starting in the new fiscal year, the benchmarks for those two asset classes will actually be a peer group based benchmark to get away from this public markets versus private markets mismatch. And we'll also show that performance in, in terms of the peer group based benchmarks as well. But here, looking at the longer term, the portfolio is actually outperforming your policy benchmark for all periods longer than, than one year. And your portfolio return is also in the top decile among your peers for the three, seven, and ten year periods. For the five year period, you're in the top forty first percentile. And I'll note the absolute level of return that the portfolio has generated for the longer term. The ten year period, you can see the total fund return is seven point six seven percent versus the six point eight percent return for the benchmark. So overall, for the longer term, the objective of outperforming your policy benchmark and meeting your actual rate of return has been met by this portfolio. If we turn to page one eighteen, I always like to balance the return statistics with the risk level that we're showing here. This is just one of the pages. We'll, we show this for different time periods, but I'll use the five year to talk about how you compare in terms of risk adjusted returns. The five year performance is ten point one percent annualized, exceeding your benchmark return. The portfolio ranked, as I mentioned, in the top forty first percentile in terms of return. But if you look at the measure of risk here, we're using just one measure here of the standard deviation of returns or the volatility of those returns over that five year period. That measure of risk here, you are in the top second percentile in terms of low risk versus your peers. So the median risk level that you see in this peer group is about nine point one five percent in, in, in standard deviation. You're significantly lower than that. So translating that to risk adjusted return in terms of sharp ratio, you are in the top fifth percentile in terms of converting that level of volatility to return on, on an efficiency basis. So this is really consistent over all historical time periods. Those pages are also in this deck. So it's, it's good to also see that not only So it's good to also see that not only are you achieving your objectives in terms of returns, but you are doing that at a reasonable level of risk. I'll turn to page one twenty-two to describe further the asset class performance versus its benchmark. We've had, again, these discussions multiple times. The mismatch that you see in terms of the underperformance you see in private equity and credit for the one-year period. As I mentioned, the going forward basis, we will have peer group as benchmarks as your portfolio, your asset class benchmarks. But historically, we're not changing anything. So you will see that this will take time for the historical results to get away from this mismatch between public and private. You know, we're not going to go restate the performance of these asset classes historically. So for the time being, you'll see this historical mismatch remain. But overall, when we talk about the money-weighted returns, you'll see that particularly credit asset class and real estate asset class has been able to outperform the peer group on a consistent basis. On page one twenty-five is your asset allocation compliance. So as of the end of the first quarter, the portfolio value was about fifty-six point seven billion. That's a decrease of about a hundred million from the end of two thousand and twenty-four. At the end of the year, at the end of the first quarter, you, the allocations were all within your allowable range with the exception of private equity. Again, new asset allocation was approved in April. And this private equity target allocation was increased from ten percent to thirteen percent. And you see that it is right around that thirteen percent target at the end of the first quarter in terms of the private equity allocation. The interest rate sensitive asset class allocation is still underweight about three percent versus the target of six percent. And this is consistent with the team's outlook for this asset class. And you'll hear more about that from Mike. And the only other thing I'll mention here is that the real estate allocation is at seventeen point seven percent. The new target from the recent asset allocation is fifteen percent. And the staff packet addresses their implementation plan to get to that fifteen percent target. I'll turn to page one twenty-eight. As I mentioned, this private markets performance is being shown here on a money-weighted basis versus the time-weighted basis that we saw here. So this is showing the private equity, credit and real estate asset class performance historically versus the peer group benchmarks, which we have adopted in this last asset allocation study and will go into effect in July first. You can see that the private equity portfolio IRR is below the peer group performance for the five and ten-year period. But since inception, it is slightly above. And the staff report details the vintage year performance as well as the implementation plan, which has evolved meaningfully in the recent years. The story for real estate and credit, as I mentioned, is more consistent over the long term. And you're consistently outperforming the pure universe on both of those asset classes. I've noted this before, but one of the important things to keep in mind is that we're, the total fund has been able to achieve a return above its actual actuarial rate of return, partially due to this private markets asset class performance, which you see has delivered returns above your seven percent hurdle. So these investments have been really additive in terms of meeting your actuarial assumed rate or return objectives. Last comment I'll make is on page one twenty-nine. This is a summary of the asset class committee meetings that took place during the first quarter. Just for your information, these are staff investment committee meetings. And their recommendations are brought to the committee to discuss the merits and risks of each investment recommendations. And it's part of our fiduciary duty to observe that proper processes are being followed. So during the first quarter, there were six committee meetings that took place where private credit, private equity, asset class implementation plans were presented and approved. And there were ten manager recommendations that were approved. So overall, the portfolio is performing as expected or better. And we do not have any concerns or recommendations for change at this point. I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Any comments or questions? Very none, we'll move on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Congratulations to the new board members, Mr. Connolly, Mr. Essex. For the record, my name is Mike Vitari, Chief Investment Officer, Arizona State Retirement System. We are covering Q one, two thousand and twenty-five performance. We covered this back in June twenty-fifth IC meeting. And this is just a recap, so I won't spend too much time on this. I know it's midday, there's other things that need to happen. So in this particular presentation, we bifurcated the order. Typically, we'd look at public equity, private equity, and then mix private and public. In this case, we're just looking at public markets. So we're going to start with with public equity. And it'll be on page one forty-two, I believe, of two forty-three. Thank you. So this is the total equity performance. We're just looking at the top line. If you'll, performance has been pretty strong. I really concentrate on excess returns. I always say that we're price takers, not price makers. We can't force the markets to give us the returns. The only thing we can do is on a relative basis, try not perform. And we've done that. So on the one, three, five-year and since inception basis, there's been good, steady, eddy outperformance. It's, we call this kind of enhanced strategies. We manage the bulk of the U.S. assets internally, not the bulk. We manage all the U.S. assets internally. And that ends up representing about sixty-six percent of total public equity assets. So that's managed by the public equity team, Samir Gadar, Cole Smith and Vicente Federico. They're toiling every day managing portfolios relative to MCI indices. The rest of the fund is managed, I'm sorry, the rest of the equity portfolio is managed externally with external managers. Those are international managers, the developed managers, or emerging market managers. At some point in time in the future, I'm looking to bring some non-U.S. portfolios in-house. But that's probably about a one, one and a half year plan. But again, if you're, when I joined here, when I rejoined here four years ago, if you looked at the excess returns, they were all posting negative over the one, three and five years. And the reason for that is that there was, we stepped away in six years, seven years now from active strategies internally and also externally. So it's taken some toil, it's taken some time. Excess performance has kind of come back. We expect the tenure performance to drop to positive, move away from negative to positive probably in the next three years, at least that's what our hope is. Turn to page, oh, actually, turn to page one forty-four. Rose mentioned market highs today. The S and P crested a new high, almost six thousand five hundred. If you look at the fourth bullet point down there, expectations were that the equity market would, by the end of this year, hit sixty-five hundred. And we're kind of already there. So we expect volatility in the near term, really because of the points that Rose brought up, geopolitical tensions, tariffs, potential for inflation. So it's going to be a little volatile, but U.S. seems to be hitting on all cylinders. So so things seem to be pretty positive. If we move over to page one forty-five, this is performance on our interest rate sensitive portfolio. We managed ninety percent, I'm sorry, one forty-six. Thank you. As you see in the pie chart down below, we managed ninety-seven percent of that portfolio internally. Three percent is managed externally. If you look at the performance, they up top again. We're price takers, not price makers. So what the market gives us is what the market gives us. The only thing we can do is try and outperform. And you'll see steady, consistent outperformance in excess return space. Seven basis points to twenty to twenty-six basis points consistently. And that compounds over time. The excess performance we've had relative to all our benchmarks over the last ten years compounded to about an additional four and a half to five billion dollars that wouldn't have been there had we just been achieving index returns. So that's total one. Go ahead and turn to page one fifty. So a little preamble before we get into the private market presentations. What was different about this quarter presentation was the implementation plans that Rose mentioned. And really, at the heart of the implementation plans are what's called the pacing studies. Now, pacing in the context of private markets is really refers to strategic planning and budgeting on how to manage commitments in private markets in the near term. So to give you an example, if we're to reallocate in public equity space, we can give that to a manager. We can bring that internally, we can invest that immediately. But when it comes to private markets, we'll commit to a GP. They'll raise a fund, they'll raise, let's say, a five hundred million dollar fund. We might give them fifty million, a hundred million. They close the fund, they won't call that capital all at the same time. They'll go through what's called capital commitments. They might call ten million, they might call twenty million. It'll take them years to call that capital. So this whole pacing study is really important for us in order to make sure that we're hitting all our targets, that we're not going to be over allocated, that we're not going to be under allocated over time, that we have a reasonable ability to kind of achieve those asset allocation and keep it steady over time. So that's my little preamble. So if we look at the private equity. So the top chart shows the return relative to the MSCI acqui, am I? I'm sorry. Sorry, the top chart shows the time-weighted rates of return, period ending March thirty-first relative to the MSCI. We're stepping away from using that benchmark. But you'll see this Rose mentioned, get the negative return, excess return of negative nine point five. As we move forward and adopt the new benchmark, that negative performance or that negative relative performance is going to be baked in. So it'll take some time to kind of lose that negative performance. If you look at the bottom portion of the chart, we're comparing our performance relative to the MSCI, North America and Europe. And that ends up being a peer benchmark. It's a benchmark made up of other private equity funds. And so it really ends up being an apples-to-apples comparison. We're comparing private assets to private assets as opposed to our private assets to public market assets. So you'll see the performance is a lot more consistent there. Turn to page one fifty-two, please. Rose also mentioned performance by vintage. You'll see here early on when ASRS started its private equity program, the being able to achieve first and second quartile performance was kind of spotty over time. But really, since two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, it's more consistent. In fact, we were looking at reports last, just earlier this week, on our total performance. And we're hitting first and second quartile performance pretty consistently since two thousand and seventeen, based upon our information. Yes, sir.
Mike, on the previous page twelve, when I was going through this the other day, in two thousand and twenty-four, there's a thirty-six point five two net IRR there. And I had trouble getting to that number. We can, we can talk about this offline later if you want to do that. But I had trouble getting to the thirty-six point five two with the data there on the rest of the line.
Noted.
Unless the, unless the markup happened like really early in the year, maybe that was it.
Definitely take it offline and touch base on that. But one of the things that we have implemented in the private equity program, starting about a year and a half ago, is a co-invest strategy. The goal is for the co-invest strategy to be thirty percent of the overall portfolio. And when it comes to co-investments, typically you end up getting that at zero carry and zero performance. So you end up getting an enhancement in returns. That portion of the portfolio has achieved some remarkable returns, which has been pretty lucky. We have a strategic partner, JP Morgan Private Equity Group, that helps us in creating that portfolio. We end up looking at all the co-invest opportunities that come from our opportunity set of our private equity managers. But we also have reach into their private equity managers. They've been doing private equity for good twenty, thirty-five years. So they have their own clients that they're managing private equity for. So that's part of the reason, it's not the whole reason, but we can definitely take that offline and explore. Thanks, sir. We move on to, oh, I'm sorry, page one fifty-seven. So I mentioned the pacing studies. This is just to put a little meat on the bone here. We look on the upper, I'm sorry, the right-hand side, the upper bullet. In the case of the implementation plan, the study, all the analysis is done on what commitments would be, what the distributions might end up being. Basically, the heart of it is that we're looking to invest about one point four billion in commitments in order to keep pace with a thirteen percent target. Now, that thirteen percent target change at the last asset allocation policy, it went from ten to thirteen percent. We were already kind of high, we were higher than the ten percent to begin with. But in order to keep pace, in order to keep our allocation at thirteen percent, we're going to be allocating about one point four billion over the year. We turned to page one sixty-two. This is real estate. Again, looking at excess performance, our benchmark here, we're measuring ourselves relative to the Knight Brief Odyssey Fund. And Knight Brief ends up being the National Council Real Estate Investment Securities, open-end funds. So we are truly comparing ourselves against other actively managed funds. In the case of Odyssey, it ends up representing about twenty-five to twenty-seven different funds that are actively managed. They all do their own thing, but they end up being a peer benchmark. And so since we are managing our real estate portfolio in an active way, it's appropriate for us to compare ourselves against this benchmark. If you look at the excess returns, again, one-year, three-year, five-year, ten-year, and since inception, you'll see outperformance across the board. So performance is going pretty well. On an absolute basis, the one-year, three-year, one-year, we're down. The asset class provided a negative two percent return. So and the returns over the three and the five years have been anemic. If you end up looking at the ten years, six percent, that's decent, but it's nowhere near our actual assumption rate. But that's part of the diversification. All your asset classes are never going to outperform all the time. There's always going to be some that are lacking. With respect to the pacing itself, if we look, turn to page one sixty-seven, you'll see the bottom line. We are moving, as Rose mentioned, we're moving from seventeen point five percent in current space in real estate, moving down to a fifteen percent target. So the allocation to real estate over the next four years is going to be about two point three billion. But you'll see at the bottom, says into the column, says two thousand and twenty-five on the right-hand side. We're only going to be allocating about a hundred and fifty million this year and twenty twenty-six, six hundred and twenty-five million in twenty twenty-seven, nine twenty-five. So as we start getting down to the target, we're still, we're still investing, but we're not investing as much because we're moving down to a fifteen percent target. The next page, page one fifty-eight. So this is a good little graphic that shows you in the case of looking at the yellow line, if we had no new allocations to real estate, within a couple of years, we'd be down south of thirteen percent, twelve percent. So it just shows you a graphic of the importance of kind of keeping, keeping investments going, but being thoughtful and methodical and planning out those commitments over time. And then finally, credit, turn to page one seventy-one. So performance on credit, again, the top part of the panel, we're comparing ourselves against the Morningstar, the performance of the credit against the Morningstar, LSTA, which is the leveraged loan index. So it's basically a broadly syndicated loan, it's a publicly traded market. So that whips up and whips down. And just as in private equity, when public markets rally, we look like losers. When the public markets go down, we look like heroes. So that's one of the reasons we're switching over to a peer benchmark. And that peer benchmark ends up being the MSCI, private credit, U.S. and Western Europe. But again, we do have some underperformance that'll be baked into the performance over time as we switch over to the new benchmark, which will take some time to kind of work itself out. But if you look at performance, the bottom panel, you'll see some consistent outperformance relative to that benchmark over time. So relative to the peer group, credit is doing fantastic. And then finally, if we can turn to page one eighty two. This is just an update, this is still, well, I think it's final now. Six thirty performance numbers, you'll see, there's two things I want to point out. You'll see, we're just almost a sixty billion here, fifty nine point eight four billion in assets. If you look at the top line, one year, three year, five year, ten years, those are all above our actual assumption rates, right? Nine percent, nine percent, ten and eight percent. So quite a difference from the quarter before. One other thing I'd like to make comment on, we did crest over the sixty billion dollar mark in July. And as of two days ago, we're at sixty point eight billion. So it looks like we're keeping our head above the water. That concludes my comments. If there's any questions, be more than happy to answer.
Any questions of Mr. Retary? Mr. Chair. I know of one of the things when I was on the board, or we were. We were looking at was having the portfolio generating enough internal cash flow. So we wouldn't have to worry about about civil liquidity in the private markets like we're experiencing now. Can you reorient me on that, where we are now on that philosophy and?
Great question. I just got the update this morning on when the last time it was we raised cash internally to pay for any pension obligations, this has been a little over a year now. So that means the private market, the private market strategies that we have, they're all mature. Credit throws off more money than it takes in. Private equities have been about even, although it's taken a little bit more this year. And then real estate is throwing off cash flow as well. So they're all, we're we're kind of self-funded from that perspective. So it's it's a matter of kind of reallocating, using futures to equitize that, but we 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 haven't had. Any cash flow crunches in the last four years since I've been here. So even though we're going through these turbulent times, we are lucky enough to have mature portfolios. And good performing GPs, everything seems to be working, working well. Hope that answers your question.
Any other questions? First of all, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
It's always amazing. So I believe now we go to agenda item number ten and risk compliance.
All right, I guess for the record, Robert Butler, Investment Risk and Compliance Officer, welcome again to the new board members. This will be a very brief summary of the presentation I gave in June related to our March information. So somewhat dated, but with our heavy allocation to privates, a lot of the numbers don't move around that much. So I'll start on page one ninety one. I will point out on this slide or related to this slide, at the time, Apple was our largest stock. As of yesterday, it was Nvidia, I assume that's still the same today, thanks to the boom in AI. Jump to the next page, page one ninety two. I'll note on this, on the correlation report, you know, Mike made the comment about real estate underperforming and, you know, when you're diversified, you see different performance and. I would sort of echo that comment and say if everything you own is going up, you're not diversified. So you never want to lose money, but it does show that you're invested in assets that respond differently to different economic environments, which helps. Create an overall smoother portfolio and better experience for everyone. Jump to page one ninety three. And apologies to the new board members if I'm going too quickly, but I think most people have heard this before, so but feel free to stop me if I'm going too fast. So here on the left, we show our asset allocation as, you know, the dollar is invested, on the right, it's the contribution to volatility. So you see that both public and private equity contribute a larger amount of volatility than the dollars invested. However, this is much less than you would see in a sixty forty portfolio made up of sixty percent equities, forty percent bonds. In those portfolios, if you run the same analysis, it's about ninety nine percent of the volatility comes from the equity side. So compared to that, we have a lot less contribution to volatility from equities. And then the next page, one ninety four. This is the same information on the contribution to volatility, but shown over time, going back to April of two thousand fifteen. So you can see the reduction in the contribution to volatility from equities as we added the additional asset classes like private credit and real estate. And on page one ninety five, start with my usual disclaimers. So this shows how our portfolio as of the end of March would have hypothetically performed in these historic stress scenarios. This is not how the portfolio actually performed in the historic scenarios. And you'll see in almost all scenarios, our portfolio would have hypothetically outperformed our policy benchmark portfolio. And that's shown in the gray bars up above. And you can think of that as sort of the value add from the investments made by both the the staff and investment consultants. And then on page one ninety six, here I'm just showing our largest external managers. And just a reminder that we are our own largest manager due to managing the US equities and most of the treasuries internally. And that's about thirty one percent of the portfolio. One ninety seven, just one quick slide on compliance. Summarize it by nothing of concern in either the pre-trade compliance system. Or the daily reports from our custody bank or the monthly reports. And the private markets investment compliance program, I would just say is continues to chug along forward with reviews ongoing. With that, I'll complete my report unless there's any questions.
Any question? Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Page one ninety five, I believe. We could take this offline too. So the 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 private credit portion of the portfolio. I I can't remember off the top of my head what's in the policy benchmark portfolio with respect to credit. But if you go to two thousand seven, two thousand nine. Portfolio return of minus, call it thirty, against minus thirty seven and a half. I'm just curious to how you think the private credit portfolio would respond relative to what's in the benchmark for credit in an environment like that? Is that, do you think that's a? An accurate view at this point, because we really haven't had a time of trial since that time for credit, the high yield market.
I mean, I wouldn't look at the decimal points to say it's that accurate, but I I think part of it is since our policy benchmark is. Based off of the the index, the LSTA Leveraged Loan Index, and that's publicly traded. So you would see that move a lot more. At least as the reported numbers, then you would see our private credit portfolio perform. So I think we would have, I think our credit would do much better than the traded credit market. Partially from, I mean, the mark to market effects, but also. I think in the the general credit market right now, there's a lot more covenant light loans. And I think in our private credit portfolio, we have much much tighter covenant components, so kind of a higher quality credit structure, if you will.
Yeah, you made me more feel more comfortable when you said that the reference index is the leveraged loan index. I'm good with that. Thanks. Thank you. Great question. Thank you for your presentation. Now we go to agenda item number eleven, which is the. Presentation, discussion, appropriate action regarding appointment, board committee officers and membership. At this point in time, I would like to recommend the following people to serve on the various three subcommittees. The Investment Committee Chair, Mr. Jay Patkounis, Vice Chair, Mr. Tom Connolly. Members being Mr. Renee Guian and Ms. Diane Landis. And for the OLC Committee, I'd recommend that chair be Ms. Sarah Weber, Vice Chair, Ms. Ashley Reese. Members being Dr. Chuck Essex and myself. And the Appeals Committee. I would recommend chair to be Ms. Diane Landis. Vice Chair, Ms. Ashley Reese, and then I would also serve on that committee. Any questions, concerns about all of that? Melanie, if you need, I've got a hard copy I can give you with that to help with minutes. It should be, make it easier. Okay.
I'm just going to make one suggestion with respect to the. Appointments completely at the discretion of the chair of the board. So simply make the appointments that you're discussing. And I'm making a comment because for the minutes, I think you said you recommend. So you are appointing, as I understand.
Right.
Yeah, thank you. Just for the minute purposes, thank you.
All right, thank you. So that that would be the appointments. We go to agenda item number twelve. Summary of current events and discussions. Anything?
I'm going to make a comment of an A with respect to a resigning trustee. So if that's okay, to take a moment here. One of our longest serving trustees, he served for fifteen point, approximately fifteen and a half years. And that is Mr. Kevin McCarthy. He's been very gracious in staying on the board while we had vacancies. And he said he would stay on until we had the full complement of board members, which we do now, subject to him now departing. But he's been gracious for years, staying on the board to make sure that we always had quorum and we always as knowledgeable people until there were more appointments. So he's been very gracious with the Arizona State Retirement System, and I'm going to just make a couple of comments. He was appointed five times, so five gubernatorial appointments. Under two governors. He has sat on all three of the board committees. And he has been chair, elected chair and vice chair of the board and various committees. During his time on the board, I think he's shown a tremendous amount of expertise, been very professional. I think staff and board members alike, as well as members of the public have conveyed comments to me. That his expertise and professionalism have been noted, and he is also, in my opinion, certainly. Being a gentleman in all sort of correspondence and dialogues and so forth, he is again, an individual that can. Make a comment, may even be different than what you were thinking and you absorb it sort of happily because of the way he's conveyed his thoughts. He's a real gentleman and really wise in some of the things he's conveyed to me over the years. So staff is going to present a pride award. We typically give a pride award. To staff members that have done super good in something and they're nominated by staff this time. We have a special nomination, it's by the director and colleagues for a board member. So I'm going to read out the pride award to present it to Mr. Kevin McCarthy. In recognition and appreciation of significant service provided to the Arizona State Retirement System Board from April two thousand and ten. To August two thousand and twenty five. With special acknowledgement of services, Chair of the Board, July two thousand and fourteen to June two thousand and eighteen. Chair of the External Affairs Committee, July two thousand and twelve to June two thousand and fourteen. And Vice Chair, July two thousand and ten to two thousand and twelve. Chair of the Board Appeals Committee, August two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nine, July two thousand and nineteen. And Vice Chair of the Investment Committee, July two thousand and nineteen to August two thousand and twenty five. Mr. McCarthy had suggested to me or asked me to read a couple of comments that he had made, so I I I extracted one of his comments to read to the board and it simply was. Kevin wanted me to convey that it was an honor to be associated with a first rate agency like the ASRS. That's what Kevin corresponded to me. So I'd like to thank on behalf of my colleagues on staff and members of the public, because he has worked, or members of the Arizona State Retirement System. Because he has worked so hard for you as members and retirees, I'd like to convey my gratitude to trustee McCarthy. So thank you all, and thank you, Kevin McCarthy.
One comment that I would just add to that. When I came on the board. He. Very graciously kind of took me under his wing. And said, relax, enjoy. And not only will you give advice, but you will learn a great deal. And I have to say, I have learned more than I have given advice. But his advice to me was very warmly received and I greatly appreciate all of his leadership that he provided us.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And Kevin's not online, is he?
Unfortunately, and this this is an example of his knowledge and expertise, he was called away to something, I can't say what, something highly important to the state. So he's working on something that was really important for the betterment of Arizona. So he is not here, but he did plan, he planned to be here in person up until a while early this morning.
Gotcha. Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a few comments, and so I've known. I guess trustee McCarthy, although I guess if he was resigned, he could just be Kevin. I think a number of us have known him for a long time and and he and I have known each other in a sort of in a in our professional capacities outside of ASRS and. You know, I I can say that in that professional capacity, we have rarely been on the same side. And I'd like to think that neither of us have ever let that cross over and as a matter of fact. When it comes, the the talking point I often used was. When I would often say, you know, go through the list of trustees and people would often, you know, say, oh, well, what's that like, right? Because they know of our roles at the Capitol. And I would say, well, actually. I don't know if I can think of a single example where Kevin and I ever had a different vote on the ASRS board. Which, you know, I think I I'd like to think of as a testament to, you know, the board governance handbook, but also the fact that, you know, I'd like to think that. He and I both left our professional roles at the door and our role as a trustee and our fiduciary responsibility. Taking, you know, you know, we put on our trustee hat when we enter into this building. And much like our chairman, when I came on board. You know, I think, you know, I'd like to think of him as a as a mentor and he, his building is right next to my building where we work in our day jobs and. There were a number of times where he was a, you know, a source of counsel. For ASRS issues and and frankly, there was a a couple of times where I sort of. As the, as you might notice, I can get passionate and I kind of lost sight of what we are really entrusted to do as trustees and. And he in a very, what's the word, very, I think, judicious and mentor like way. Kind of pulled me back and without saying it reminded me of what we're really entrusted to do. And and I'm very thankful for that and. And, you know, I think that the state and the retirement system and the the ASRS is in a better place for his fifteen years of service. Both as a trustee and in general in his role, I would argue professionally. And what he has advocated for in terms of sound financial policy for for our retirement system. So. I am very thankful for his contributions to ASRS and his service as a trustee. So. You know, his contributions will be missed. And I know I had had conversations and I was very appreciative of of his willingness to to stay on and. And continue to help the board as as we continue to grow. And I'm I'm very thankful for our our new trustees and. I'm excited to see, you know, if we, you know, can get another, you know, it'll be tough to replace Kevin, but I'm excited to see, you know, where we go from there and and he will be missed and. But also, he's also right next door to me. So I look forward to interacting with him in the future and in his day job, but he was a great presence on this board and. And yeah, it'll, it'll be his, you know, his presence will be missed, but, you know, his legacy will will live on. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? Well, here we move to agenda item number thirteen. The supplemental operations reports for possible presentation, discussion and appropriate action. Dr. Matson.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity, but nothing additional to add.
Appreciate that. So then agenda item number fourteen, board member executive direct request for future agenda items. Does anyone have any people that I have that we need to place on the board?
Mr. Cherry. Director, I think it would be really interesting and maybe timely with. Director, I think it would be really interesting and maybe timely with our our new board members. You know, we have a lot of information we talk about in strategic planning of the pride values and and that's such a big driver of your organization. But even just a brief, whenever we had time, I think, presentation on that and how that came to be and how that drives the organization, I I would I would love to hear more about that.
Oh, fantastic. Fantastic. Yeah, that's, we think of that as sort of a part of our culture. That's envelopes our culture. So thank you. Yeah. I think my colleagues would be delighted in presenting it either the next board meeting, but I had the next one is really tight. Might be the one after that. Thank you.
This takes us to agenda item number fifteen, call to the public. People to speak.
Chairperson Miller, this is Melanie Alexander, members of the board. I do have a email comment that I will summarize. And then I will also follow it up and send all the trustees. It's a five page document. So that way you'll have all the information. The comment is from Michael Fenn. He is with Private Equity Stakeholder Project. He is highlighting a private equity firm, Thomas Bravo, which owns Real Page Property Management Software Company, in which the ASRS is an investor. He points out residential rates for rent in Phoenix and Tucson have risen by at least thirty percent in large part due to Real Page. There's a number of, he also cites a number of class action lawsuits that Real Page is a part of that accuse of collusion and creating housing monopolies that negatively impact tenants across the country. He has asked that we halt all future investments to Bravo, Thomas Bravo, excuse me, Tomma Bravo, until Real Page removes the rental price sharing component of their software. And they are also asking the ASRS meet with Tomma Bravo and ask them how they plan to reduce the financial reputational risk to Real Page with the growing costs of all pending litigations against the company. And again, I will follow up and provide you all with a full, the full five pages.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak?
There is no one else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, before we move forward, I just would like to do one thing, and that is agenda item seventeen, I would like to table and move it to the next board meeting. First of all, looking at the time and knowing that that will take some time as well. So we will do that. Now, with that said, the next regular public ASRS board meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November twentieth, twenty twenty five at nine A M. Right here in this boardroom. And after that, we now have adjournment.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Would you, would you like us to execute on this? Item seventeen, it's pretty, instructions are pretty straightforward.
Well, I we we can do that. I just looking at time and I mean, not in this meeting. Oh, actually. Yes, use a review documents on, we need to. Yeah, yeah. It's part of the discussion. With that, now we come to adjournment of this year's meeting, this day's meeting.
Thank you, everyone. The time is twelve thirty eight.